Mayor Coombs?
President.
Councilmembers Bagley, Finley, Levison, Samore, Santos, Witt. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's time for public invited to be heard. The first person on the list is Barb Brunk. Could you please come up and state your name and address? You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman Barb Brunk, 2718 Villanova Court. I'm here on behalf of the Golden family to express their support for the Greenway extension that extends from Golden Ponds west underneath Airport Road and then will connect to the county trail over to Pala Ponds. We have been working with staff to figure out the alignment through the Golden Nelson property and to craft an agreement to make dedication of the trail. And we just wanted to let you know that we're working on it. We're glad staff's working on it and we look forward to using that trail when it's constructed at some point in the future. Thank you, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Sue Connery.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Sue Connery, 136 South Main Street, Longmont, Colorado. I've been a homeowner here in Longmont at the current address for over 22 years. We at some point have been in and out of the floodplain for the city of Longmont and FEMA and have attended all the floodplain meetings that have been by the city and realized that we do need to do some work on the St. Brain River. I am not in the southeast urban renewal district. I however have been to all those particular meetings and been to the First and Main Street meetings. This particular meeting, I was kind of caught unawares of the talking about the St. Brain River corridor. And I am here on behalf of not only myself but several others who have a 150-year-old water right that comes off the St. Brain River and it is the Dickens Private Ditch Water Right. I have an access easement that goes all this to the middle of the St. Brain River and I continue to use that water right. I am one of several persons who continue to use their water rights from the St. Brain River. In looking at some of the material for the planning, I don't see anything of that in the plan at this point in time. The reason I'm bringing this forward to you is because we have had other developments around us with the city and have been forgotten or left out. And because of that, we have then had to backtrack on a purchase of the city property around us with a pub locusts realty. We have had to spend thousands of dollars with attorneys and surveyors to make sure that that water right will continue and continue to be used by not only myself but by my son. So today I have brought with me a water court ruling of the decree of my water right that I will be giving to Ms. Sarah over here to be made a public record that that is my water right. I am also including an operations and maintenance agreement regarding that particular ditch right that also is with the city of Longmont. This particular ditch right starts at the Main Street Bridge. So it's going to be impacted by many different ways. So I'm wanting to go on record, I do have a 150-year-old water right I'm protecting. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Kim Knack.
Kim Knack, 136 South Main, Mayor Coombs and City Council. This Bridge River project is one heck of a jigsaw puzzle. I think it's a great project. I'm thankful the city's acknowledging the very real flood possibilities of the St. Brain River. I'm here in regards to my 1862 Dickens ditch right, the easement and the pump house. These are all a piece of the jigsaw puzzle and they need to be a part of the completed project. It's one puzzle piece, but it's a piece that needs to be paid attention to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the...
Hello. I'm Mike Snatspire, 12001 Twilight Street. The St. Brain River Corridor represents a remarkable opportunity and should rise to the level of one of the highest priorities of the city. Transforming the St. Brain is really about the elimination of a potential $300 million liability and literally converting this into a $300 million asset, a $600 million net benefit. As proven by the success of other cities, the comprehensive and effective river corridor transformation can literally yield a 100-to-one return on capital improvement dollars and a 2,000-to-one return on planning dollars invested, thus a top priority. Parks and Rec deserves tremendous credit for the heavy lifting it has done to date to create the St. Brain Greenway through the heart of this industrial area. The question I pose to you today is whether having a Parks and Recreation-directed master planning effort is best suited to address these complex and multifaceted issues of the river. Could this lead to recreation-driven commitments that could place short-sighted and unnecessary restrictions on the economic, social, cultural, and private property development potentials of the river corridor? Could dissecting a much larger, more complex $3,000 river planning effort and including it into a smaller $200,000, I'm sorry, $300,000 planning effort into a $200,000 effort do justice to the importance of this initiative? Would doing so compromise the fundamental integrity of the planning procurement process? Allowing parks to lead the way in a master planning effort could create overly stringent regulations more typical of Boulder that could preempt the economic development necessary to fund flood mitigation improvements? I believe we absolutely can convert this liability into an asset and sooner rather than later. Yet after 18 months on the work plan, there's not yet been a single river corridor public meeting. In light of the North Rail proposal, we also need to let go of counting on First and Main to drive the river corridor transformation and comprehensively explore all options. I've addressed these issues in an outline, questions, and framework of other successful river corridor planning efforts that I would like to share with you here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I guess I will close the public invited to be heard if there's one come forward.
My name's Ray Bergio. I'm a part owner of 131 South Main Street here in Essex Motors in Longmont, Colorado. This obviously has a major effect on our business and our livelihood of our family and generations to come of what we have planned here. So I guess my main point here is to see what the details of how this is going to affect our livelihood and our business and how we're going to basically generate income for my family. So I just want to go on record saying I am for it as long as it doesn't directly, I guess, reflect our business negatively. We're here to still make money and still support Longmont just as we do, and we definitely appreciate everything you guys do, but just want to be on record that I do, I am for it as long as it doesn't negatively affect us. I guess that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close public invited to be heard. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we have several study items tonight, I'd like to potentially talk about one after the proclamations, and it's addressing the Arts in Public Places emails that we've received. So if council will indulge us after the proclamations, I would like to have a quick discussion regarding the AIPP before we start 4A.
Fine with me. So already agreed? All right. Okay, again, 4A. Next we have a proclamation dating, designating November 2012 as the 125th anniversary of Longmont Area of Commerce Month in Longmont. The 125th anniversary of the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce was founded as the Longmont Board of Trade in 1887, and whereas this organization became the Longmont Commercial Association in 1915, and whereas in 1927 it became known as the Longmont Chamber of Commerce and was officially accredited by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and whereas in 1980 the chamber moved from 455 Kimbark Street to its present location at 528 Main Street, and the word "area" was included in the title as the chamber represents the communities of St. Brain Valley, and whereas the mission of the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce is to promote business success for members through leadership, advocacy, education, and programming, and whereas the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce invites the community to join in its 125th anniversary celebration on November 2, 2012, at the Plaza Conference Center. Now therefore, I Dennis Al Combs, Mayor, by virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim November 2012 as the 125th anniversary of the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce Month in Longmont, and I invite all area residents and businesses to celebrate the accomplishments and contributions of the chamber to our communities over the past 125 years. So Kathy, do you want to come forward? Sure, you bet. Yeah, if you want to say a few words first and...
Mayor Coombs and City Councilmembers, I want to thank you for this proclamation. We're very proud of that milestone and we really feel very fortunate to be in such a great community where we have businesses that are thriving and people that are involved in many of the nonprofits of this community. Tonight I have many of our board members, our Chair Craig Chaney, our Chair-elect Forrest Fleming, our Past Chair Rick Sampson, Monte Maduna, Eve Bruce, I'm going to skip the staff right now, Linda Curran, Sue Ellen Grimald, Don Ost, and Kyle Snyder, the staff, Shelley McLeod, Kathy Stevens, and Scott Cook to accept this proclamation, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shall we come up front?
Stand like you like each other. Of course I do. Everyone's like so awkward trying to get started for a picture.
Okay, one, two, three. Okay, try it again. One, two. Very good, thank you.
Okay, next we have a proclamation designating October 2012 as Conflict Resolution Month in Longmont. Conflict Resolution Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas conflict resolution encompasses mediation, arbitration, facilitation, collaboration, decision-making, ombuds activities, restorative justice, and other responses to differences, and whereas conflict resolution processes empowers individuals, families, communities, organizations, and businesses to foster communication and devise solutions that are acceptable to the needs and interests of all parties involved, and whereas conflict resolution is taught and practiced by citizens in many school systems, universities, and graduate programs throughout Colorado and the world as a way to solving problems, and whereas professional associations of conflict mediators and facilitators promote peaceful and creative solution to disputes, and whereas community-based programs such as Longmont Mediation Services and Longmont Community Justice Partnership work to strengthen local relationships by fairly and equitably resolving neighborhood and community conflicts and opening community dialogues based on reason and mutual respect, thereby strengthening local relationships. Now therefore, I Dennis Al Combs, Mayor, by the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim October 2012 as Conflict Resolution Month in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to be aware of these vital services. And Susan and Amy, could you come forward and would you like to make a statement first?
I just want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to celebrate with you and the community and with 20 other Colorado cities, four Colorado counties, and with the State of Colorado, Conflict Resolution Month. I think Colorado is the only state in the Union that celebrates Conflict Resolution Month rather than day. I also wanted to, as part of this proclamation, especially recognize Longmont Mediation Services' 30 volunteer mediators who contribute hundreds of hours each year to help resolve disputes between residents. These mediators exemplify the mediation approach of collaboration, conciliation, and peacebuilding in Longmont that Conflict Resolution Month celebrates. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Spenson with the Longmont Community Justice Partnership. I just wanted to read our mission and thank you all again for your proclamation. The Longmont Community Justice Partnership's mission is to cultivate a safe and caring community, reduce crime, and bring together those involved in crime or conflict to be heard, creating justice for all. Our work flourishes because of your support, our collaborative partnerships, and the Longmont community of whom we have around 100 volunteers or more who participate in our restorative justice processes throughout the year. So thank you, Mayor Coombs and City Councilmembers, for acknowledging and supporting the essential work of Conflict Resolution.
Thank you. A proclamation designating October 24, 2012, as Food Day in Longmont, Colorado, whereas promoting safer, healthier diets is a critical factor in improving citizens' overall health, and whereas supporting sustainable family farms and local agricultural benefits in the local economy, and whereas obtaining fair play and safe conditions for food and farm workers is beneficial for both the producer and consumer so that the food we produce and consume is safe and fair for all, and whereas expanding access to food and reducing hunger is of critical importance to aid those who live in food deserts, and whereas reforming factory farms to protect the environment and farm animals is necessary to sustain future generations, and whereas the health and well-being of our citizens is a primary concern for the city of Longmont. Now therefore, I Dennis Al Combs, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim October 24, 2012, as Food Day in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to participate in this nationwide celebration and movement for healthy, affordable, and sustainable food. Is there someone here else going to receive that award?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kemp and I work for Boulder County Parks and Open Space and I'm here with Leslie Furborn. She's with Livwell Longmont. There's been a number of groups working on this event. This is the second time it's been held in Boulder County and I think nationally as well. And we have a number of really wonderful events planned for the next week, sort of the month, but just to give you an idea, we have 14 Healthy Food Drives that will be taking place at different government offices and corporate offices around the county. Along with your proclamation, we also have the Boulder County Board of Health, the Boulder County Commissioners, and the Food and Egg Policy Council for Boulder County. And then just to give you some ideas, Whole Foods will be doing a number of tasting events and healthy food education sessions. The Louisville Senior Center has planned special classes that will involve cooking demonstrations with healthy vegetables. There will be dental and health and nutrition programs through Boulder County Area Agency. Our offices will be doing a bounty of the garden tasting party this week and we're also doing a Healthy Food Drive. And do you want to add anything else?
Hi, and I'm Lesley Furborn with Livwell Longmont, and I just wanted to let you know that Livwell Longmont is working with 10 companies in Longmont to do a Healthy Food Drive to really emphasize that our food pantries need healthy foods as well as just general food, and so we're working with the Hour Center, and our goal is to raise 50,000 pounds.
Thank you so much. Could you come forward and... Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. We all received emails, I think Friday and some on Saturday, regarding Arts in Public Places. The first two emails I received, and I'm assuming we all got them because it's all got sent to the main account where our emails are, the email gets pushed to all of our accounts. I'm looking for one of them. The first two actually said that the Arts in Public Places program was going to be eliminated. I don't recall that we were, in the 2013 budget, we have, as far as I know, it's still at 1%. Is that correct, Harold?
That's correct.
So, and then I received another email from a board member, Julie Clement. This is all public record so I can talk about the emails. The comments from Councilmember Levison at the AIPP meeting on Thursday were disheartening. Please consider keeping the organization intact when reviewing the 2014 budget, and as a Commissioner, I hear very many positive responses regarding AIPP. I'm currently editing a film about shock art in collaboration with Channel 8 and LPC which illustrates the enhancement this art has on our community. Thank you for your consideration. We had this discussion on October 2 regarding AIPP, about not even a 20-second segment regarding Arts in Public Places. So we went back, I went back and looked at the video. I'm trying, I'm trying to understand, in a meeting that happened last Thursday, where did it ever come out that the City Council was considering eliminating the Arts in Public Places program? Because I don't recall a member of council advocating for elimination of the Arts in Public Places program. What I do recall was that like with the human services funding, 1.6%, we're also going to look at the AIPP 1% as we are going to look at everything once we finish the 2013 budget. Is staff under the impression that there's going to be an elimination of the program?
No, sir. Staff's understanding of the situation based on the direction that council gave us in the motion that was made was to look at the... at future projects, you know, did inform the AIPP Commission that, you know, that council was indeed looking at the, you know, in the future in terms of looking at the funding for Art in Public Places. And I do believe the understanding from Lauren was that, along with that, was a speculation that possibly that that program could be eliminated. So, that's what I understand from talking with Lauren, and I'm sure Councilmember Levison could, you know, could add to that. But, so I think it was in the course of them talking about 2013 projects, maybe into 14, that, you know, that as the council lays on to the Commission, that the Councilmember Levison did inform the AIPP Commission about what happened at the October 2 council meeting in terms of that discussion.
But in the follow-up, when I talked to Wes this morning, in a follow-up conversation yesterday, apparently staff is still under the impression that the AIPP is going to be eliminated.
And again, is what I understand from, you know, from Lauren Greenfield is that certainly it was a discussion about the funding for art in public places, and I do believe that one of the options that, I guess I would suggest that you might want to ask Councilmember Levison, that it did come up in the discussion, that it could lead to an elimination of the Art in Public Places program. And that's really what I understand from talking with Lauren Greenfield.
Okay. Councilmember Levison, do you want to shed some light on this? Because in the email that you sent me, apparently there was, you said there's no controversy here, but we have a board that believes that they're going to be eliminated in the 2014 budget. And I believe the city manager's talked to other council members about what is this and what occurred, so any light on this would be greatly appreciated.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, as council liaisons, I had some concerns when I saw the projects going up and knowing how many times some of the projects don't get done in the year that they're begun. So, I just mentioned to the committee, as Karen just indicated, that we were considering 1%. You know, just to be fair, to, you know, offer, to let them know that we were going to have that at a future council meeting, and to encourage them to engage and watch for it on our agenda, so that they can look at the material that we're presented with, and then be able to make comment and suggestions and kind of round out the picture. And, you know, when pressed by the committee, you know, frankly, when we look at something, I can't tell somebody everything's going to be intact the way it has been for the 22 years of the program, but every time we take a look at these things, there is an update. And I mentioned, as you just said, that we're looking at everything. We're looking at the parks O&amp;M planning, and this is a committee that hasn't really looked beyond year over year. And so, I encourage them, knowing what the operations, well, the maintenance, ongoing maintenance of the pieces in the collection are, and the collection is growing, that it would be, I would encourage them, you know, to not wait, to think about things, and think about what the AIPP program is and what it could be in the future. And that's simply it. And, you know, we don't, we have very, you know, intelligent people on the Commission, and frankly, when the council discusses these things, it's better that people know ahead of time, and it doesn't just appear on the November agenda as, you know, here's what the council said. So, it appears that we've got people, you know, engaged, maybe concerned, but I think anytime you say we're going to look at something, commissioners realize that we're going to look at making some updates and improvements, and sometimes that's scary to people.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. And I get that, especially with the reset, but as I mentioned to Councilmember Levison, we had a conversation last night. We have a 2013 budget we're about to approve here next week, I believe, or maybe the next week or two. Next week, excuse me, because it's before November 1. We have a five-year CIP. Harold, you know, as far as you can recall in your experience as a city manager, and I can recall my time on council, every year we see a CIP, every year we approve a CIP. It's a five-year CIP, five years, but that does get adjusted from time to time. I think to potentially scare a board and commission to say, "Look out for 2014 because you may not be around," is worrisome, because I don't recall that ever being mentioned in that meeting. And again, we went back and looked at the video to see that, and it wasn't there. From, you know, and since Karen is the director, had that come up at that meeting, I'm sure she would have informed Lauren Greenfield, who oversees Arts in Public Places, but that didn't occur. And then, all of a sudden, to be, I guess, sandbagged at a board meeting, you know, I would just caution members of council, just let your boards and commissions know that we're, you know, in the next year, going forward in the 2014 budget, for the 2014 budget, we're going to be looking at everything, but no one should be frightened as far as an elimination of a program that has a pretty good track record. That's my only concern, is that where we had a meeting on October 2, where there was no controversy about looking at everything, now we have a board and commission that are scared that they're just going to be eliminated without any thought, or without any input. And if I'm not mistaken, Harold, when we start talking about the 2014 budget here in the next couple of months, we're going to go through the whole public process and inform boards and commissions for their input. I mean, am I wrong in that, or is council just going to make a decision in a vacuum?
Mayor, council, as we look at the process, Teresa and Jim have worked on developing a process that we're going to go through, and I think actually, we're trying to set some time up to review the specific details of the process. But in general, what we want to do is really take a pragmatic approach to looking at all of the budgets and how we move through it, obviously engaging in a public discussion on these issues with the boards and commissions and with council as we move through this. When you go through these types of budget reviews, you need to make sure that you're getting as much input as you possibly can, so you can make informed decisions, so the council can make informed decisions, and frankly, so staff can provide adequate information as we move through this process. It is very important, from my experience in going through these types of budget discussions, that the information has to be really solid, to the point, and well-vetted, so that that can lend itself to a strong decision-making process. And so, it is going to be a very focused, pragmatic approach as we move through this process.
And again, this is something that we're going to be looking at, and I haven't had any discussions with members of council about AIPP at all. And again, to raise a flag of uncertainty for a board and commission, I have problems with. And, you know, we're here, we're here to inform our boards and commissions, potentially not to scare the bejesus out of them. Now, so I hope this gets, and Karen, I hope this gets to the AIPP, to staff, in talking with Wes today. I left a message for Lauren, I didn't hear from her, but according to Wes, they believe they're being eliminated, that it's a done deal. And I don't recall having that discussion on October 2 at all, and we're far from a done deal.
Councilmember Ragley.
Looks like I'm not talking tonight, people. It's night off. Yes. I just wanted to say that, tell council members, tell constituents and citizens of Longmont and city staff, I have had absolutely zero conversations with any fellow council members, or any staff members, or any members of the community, other than two random emails I got saying that, "How dare we cut Art in Public Places funding." I personally would not be for that, and, but it's not a discussion that even came up on the radar as far as this council member goes. So, I mean, shocker, as far as I'm concerned, but just to alleviate any fears that I don't think anybody's talking about cutting funding. And so, if it does get cut, it's just as, now somebody raised it. But, I'm kidding. But, yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to put, let people know that, yeah, there have been no discussions on my part, and I wouldn't be for that.
Councilmember Levison.
You know, I'm not really a very scary person. I don't even scare my kids or my dogs, so to give that characteristic, that characterization is a little bit off-base. But, you know, I just think that maybe people took it a little too far. There were a lot of questions, and all I simply said, again, is that we're taking a look at things, like we've taken a look at everything. And so, if others have jumped to conclusions, whether or not there's logic to those conclusions, frankly, this committee now is happily engaged in maybe having a discussion about what the program looks like going forward, and certainly council members will have an upbeat discussion around it. And, you know, frankly, you know, I think that people may have, you know, I didn't sugarcoat things, but people were pressing me on things, and I simply said, you know, "It's not my decision, make, it's the whole council, and we're going to have a discussion." And frankly, if people misinterpreted it, or, you know, took it to a conclusion that we have not reached, is not something that I just wanted to state, you know, for the fact that we are taking it up, and to encourage them to engage in the discussion. And if that ended up people getting worried about things, frankly, it's my responsibility to bring things to the commissions and let them start thinking about some of the strategic things that we're doing, so.
I think it's kind of appropriate that this is Conflict Resolution Month. Councilmember.
I think this is just lesson learned, how very carefully we have to speak as liaisons to our boards, and it is so easy to misinterpret what is said, and so, I think, lesson learned, let's be careful out there, and let's move on.
All right. Let's restart our study session.
Mayor, your first item on the agenda is an update on the discussion between the Longmont Housing Authority and Boulder County regarding Worthy Cause funding, and I believe Michael Reese with the Longmont Housing Authority is here to speak with you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Reese. I'm the director of Longmont Housing Authority. Conflict Resolution Month. I have another one for you. You have in your packet, I believe, a staff summary, a letter from the Boulder County Commissioners, and a letter from the Longmont Housing Authority regarding a grant application, or an application to the Worthy Cause Tax Program in 2010, and our inability to come together as entities to create an agreement and craft agreement that was suitable for execution by the Longmont Housing Authority, that met our fiduciary responsibilities to our housing authority, our assets in the community, and also to the council. We've met over the years with the county commissioner's staff to try to share with them our concerns about the Worthy Cause Tax Program, and particularly around the wording of the document that had been in use since the Worthy Cause Program began in 2000. The documents that you presented gives you a history of the program, and it was passed overwhelmingly three times by the electorate, and we're not here to dispute the merits of the program that is called Worthy Cause. It has done great things for 501(c)(3) nonprofits across this county, including in Longmont. In 2008, the third round of Worthy Cause got approved, and that included housing authorities. And we're frankly a different beast than 501(c)(3) nonprofits, and at that point in time, we were encouraged to go ahead and apply for the funding source, because it has a unique feature in our industry, and that's called debt reduction. And we applied for some funds to lower the debt on the Longmont Housing Authority's administrative building at 1228 Main Street. It's already a public building. It also has 10 apartments attached to the back, which we sublet out to some nonprofits that provide some supportive services to their clients. We let them know that this was not an acceptable agreement, it was not just us, Boulder Housing Partners and the City of Boulder, which is the Boulder Housing Authority, had the same concerns. We tried to iron out some ideas around how to craft an appropriate agreement to utilize the funds that met the purpose and intent of the Worthy Cause Program as it applied to us, and certainly to make sure that the county could appropriately be satisfied with the protection of tax dollars, which they're stewards of. We don't dispute any of that. We just could never get to an agreement that met the needs of the Longmont Housing Authority in terms of a pure business arrangement. Far too restrictive agreement, far too restrictive language, many elements were just things that we were, could never get comfortable with. So, we had a choice this summer to just sort of walk away quietly and just say, "Thanks, but no thanks," or at least inform the council that we got to this point, and ask for, you know, your advice, guidance, counsel, or just to inform you of the matter and the community as to why we're not accepting the Worthy Cause Tax money as it relates to 1228 Main Street. In the subsequent weeks, we were informed that a letter had arrived to you via our board, via email, so we felt we had to respond, which was what got this going, coming to council. We were going to be at a work session two weeks ago. We were asked to have a separate meeting and try to iron things out, which is fine. Nothing really became out of that meeting that would warrant our decisions to this point to come forward and just say, you know, "The documents as presented in their current rendition are inappropriate for our agency." Not a lot of hard feelings here. We have a couple of choices. We walk away and say, "Thank you," or we ask the council to intercede on our behalf when you meet with the county commissioners, and ask the county commissioners to direct their county staff to craft an agreement that works for Longmont Housing Authority, Boulder Housing Authority, and by extension, I guess, the Boulder County Housing Authority. It's probably an agreement that should have been put in place soon after housing authorities essentially changed the game when Worthy Cause opened up their funding resources to housing authority. But we've been unable to access those funds because of our restriction, our inability to come to terms with an agreement. Boulder Housing Partners was successful in accessing an application, but it also took them an extended period of time. And I don't think that that's anyone's intention, but that's how it's really been played out. So, those are the two things that we have, our choices. We walk away quietly, say, "Thanks, but no thanks," and probably ask the county to direct those dollars to a Longmont nonprofit that probably has a pending application. You know, the nonprofits are their own beast, they have their own governance, they make their own decisions, and they've executed these agreements, and that's their choice. We just found them not acceptable to our business model. We're well aware that Boulder County Housing Authority has executed several agreements and accepted Worthy Cause Tax funding for its projects and for our communities. Again, that's a different beast than Longmont Housing Authority and Boulder City Housing Authority. That housing authority is. Uh, nothing really became, came out of that meeting that would warrant our decisions to this point to come forward and just say, you know, the, the documents as presented in their current rendition are inappropriate for our, our, our agency. Um, not a lot of hard feelings here. We have a couple of choices. We walk away and say, thank you, or we ask the council to, um, intercede on our behalf when you meet with the county commissioners, and ask the county commissioners to direct their county staff to craft an agreement that works for Longmont Housing Authority, Boulder Housing Authority, and by extension, I guess, the Boulder County Housing Authority. It's probably an agreement that should have been put in place soon after housing authorities, um, essentially changed the game, uh, when Worthy Cause opened up their funding resources to housing authority. But, uh, we've been unable to access those funds because of our restriction, our inability to come to terms with an agreement. Boulder Housing Partners was successful in accessing, uh, an application, but it also took them an extended period of time. Um, and, and I don't think that that's anyone's intention, but that's how it's really been played out. So those are the two things that we, we have our choices. We walk away quietly, say, thanks, but no thanks, and probably ask the county to direct those dollars to a Longmont nonprofit that probably has a pending application. Um, you know, the nonprofits are their own beast. They have their own governance. They make their own decisions, and they've executed these agreements, and that's their choice. Uh, we, we just found them not acceptable to our, um, our business, our business model. We're well aware that Boulder County Housing Authority has executed several agreements and accepted Worthy Cause Tax money for its projects and for our communities. Um, again, that's a different beast than Longmont Housing Authority and Boulder City Housing Authority. That housing authority is, is controlled by Boulder County. The Board of County Commissioners sit as the board of the housing authority. So that actually is a separate animal yet again, um, from the current structure of the Longmont Housing Authority and the Boulder Housing Partners. Um, I'm actually joined by members of my board to, we've been at this for a couple of years. Um, my board is here tonight. Darren Anson is our chair. Chris Curtis, Jim Ferguson, and Ann Care are all here tonight to sort of have this dialogue. If you want to have this dialogue, answer some questions that we can have. Um, but again, we're not here to dispute the worthiness of the Worthy Cause Program. We think it does tremendous things. We'd love to participate. It's available for funding until 2018, which is even more important to get it right, instead of entering agreements that we feel uncomfortable with as, as an agency that represent, and represent the city, um, in a way that, uh, kind of, kind of challenges our fiduciary responsibility, um, to our assets. So you have a long letter from us. Um, you have a letter from the county, a letter from staff. Um, it's really that simple, honestly. It boils down, after two and a half years, it boils down to the county needs to let us help them improve their program by crafting a new and revised agreement for the housing authorities to more equitably access these funds. I have board members here. I'm not certain how many wish to speak, maybe depending on the questions.
Well, I'll start now. When I read this letter, it sounds like you're thinking of this more as a loan with a 99-year, um, obligation, but I don't see anything that really describes the terms of the loan, the interest rate, or, um, the amortization schedule, or did you have a real estate attorney look at this thing? I mean, obviously it's not a grant, it's more of a loan, but.
It is a loan, and it's a partnership deed of trust, and, and we can appreciate the county has a, a securitizing inquiry of what they want to do with the Worthy Cause Tax. When we first looked at this program, we actually construed the dollars as a grant with some sort of service agreement between the two agencies that can be met with an intergovernmental agreement. We are a quasi-governmental entity. The building the dollars would be going towards is already a public building. It is our administrative office building. We have a real estate attorney that is a Longmont Housing Authority staff person, attorney. He was actually at the last meeting, um, and discussing the whole issue around loan and, and, and securitizing those dollars.
Yeah, 99 years seems kind of strange. It's kind of like a fast-track train that's never gonna be built, or a ship that's never gonna come into, so, I mean, maybe 99 years is a good thing. I mean, you never have to repay it. But I, I noticed in this letter from, uh, the Board of County Commissioners that they have an alternate, um, in section three on page two that says the county will consider alternate adequate security for Worthy Cause Awards, such as a letter of credit or a comparable mechanism if LHA desires. Is, is that a possibility? Could the city furnish you with a credit letter or something like that, or?
That, that was referenced in a recent letter, um, but that was not something that was discussed at our most recent meeting in terms of how to get there without a deed or note or deed of trust. I mean, there's some, there's machinations that, uh, um, have not been pursued, and, and we, the way the meeting was left is the county was gonna revisit some of their, you know, some, some of what they could do and come back to us, and we had not heard from them through today. So, um, really, you know, it's up to the county. This is the county's baby. They, they get to improve it or not.
Okay. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Michael, for those that did not have the opportunity to read, those folks that are in, in the audience, or for the Time's Call benefit, can you explain exactly what the heartache is for the Longmont Housing Authority, just succinctly?
Um, well, I guess I'd start with, first and foremost, we felt that it was a grant between two governmental entities. We can fully appreciate the Boulder County's desire to protect taxpayer monies. Um, we expect that a service agreement could be met through the, the traditional tried and true mechanism of an intergovernmental agreement. Longmont Housing Authority is a quasi-governmental entity. Um, there are, there are elements in the application, in the, in the agreement that we just feel that there's just too much claw in the Longmont Housing Authority that needs not be there by Boulder County and for $150,000. And you reference the 99 year. That's actually quite an extended time for Longmont, um, for the amount of dollars where it's taken. And not to be facetious, this is an amount of dollars that we were gonna blend with some of our own dollars to buy down our debt and recalibrate our mortgage payments, and that time has passed. So we have, there are many elements within the agreement. Um, the 99 year, we're not very impressed with. Uh, there was a lot of reluctance to go from be, be in further position beyond second. That probably is something that can be negotiated through. Um, there are elements in the agreement that, uh, um, we would have to ask for permission to place the building, say, in, in, if we wish to collateralize that building against another loan for something which we might want to do as a housing authority to meet another aspect of our, our, um, our agency goals, and we'd have to let the county basically approve that. And we're not interested in asking the county for permission to operate our business model. Um, we have no issue with asking the council or asking the board, and, but it was not something we, we felt necessary. And this is old language based on the nonprofit structure recipients of the, of the grant, where I think the county was probably trying to make sure that the nonprofits were well, sort of, not under the thumb, that's a little strong, but, uh, it, it had some mechanism of repayment and control. It's simply not necessary in an intergovernmental relationship mechanism between the City of Longmont Housing Authority and Boulder County.
Boulder Housing Partners, they have an intergovernmental agreement.
The counties here, they can speak to the name of the document. They have an agreement that's, that did move the funds to, um, to the City of Boulder. They did not require a note and deed of trust. Um, they do have an agreement that they found satisfactory. There are some elements of that agreement that we've read that don't quite get us where we'd like to be, including the 99-year restriction.
Sure, but, but also in reading their letter and talking to Commissioner Gardner, that apparently that was an error from the past, this past county attorney.
Uh, that's correct. Their letter does state that that particular deal, which we would have loved to have had a conversation about, like, having that, let's start there with that deal and work on some of the nuances of the agreement. Um, that deal is clearly stated that they made a mistake on that transaction. So in essence, Boulder Housing Partners, when they apply for additional funds, are probably back to square one, I'm sure, anyway, as we are, we've never quite been able to get off of square one.
And, you know, Darren, it looks like Darren's got.
I'm gonna introduce Darren Anson. He's the chair of Longmont Housing Authority.
And to go back, and to go back to that, I was always under the impression Worthy Cause Tax money being distributed to nonprofits and now for housing authorities was a grant. I don't recall it being a loan anywhere in the language. In fact, I looked. We, we actually looked together. I, I don't recall that there is a, I don't understand where that trigger is for the county to do that. And when I asked Commissioner Gardner at a meeting a while back, I, I couldn't get a, a clear distinction. It's a loan that you don't have to pay back, is what I got. Then why need the 99 years and the deed of trust, is what I didn't understand. Now, I'm, I'm all about, and I understand about safeguarding taxpayer dollars. I think there are other ways to do it, especially when the Longmont Housing Authority is in an extension of the City of Longmont. If you go defunct, and I'm, and I'm not, you know, advocating that at all. And if for some reason, you know, something happens to the housing authority, all those assets revert back to the City of Longmont.
That is correct. Um, it's in our bylaws. The housing authority is organized under a state statute. Um, the council appoints the board. We are a state statutory body, quasi-governmental entity of the City of Longmont. Uh, you, you interview and put our board in place. Our board is a policymaking body, but we obviously work very closely with the City of Longmont.
Well, there are others that want to talk, but it, it seems like Boulder Housing Partners, and I mentioned this to Commissioner Gardner, looks like Boulder Housing Partners got a pretty sweet deal. Did you guys apply at the same time?
Yes, we were awarded funding in the same cycle, and, and we tried to work together with the county to get to a point where we would, um, meet and agree. This is not rocket science. This is grant money. We deal in grant money and, and secured grant money all the time. Um, but we, from a number of agencies, but the, the, this is an administrative construct, this program, how it's being rolled out. And that's where we would ask the council to support, requesting the county commissioners to instruct the county staff to sit down and bang out an agreement that we can use going forward, because really, that's the question. $150,000 is only part of our issue. We're willing to actually forego that until we can get an agreement that works. This is a, this is a good program in this county. It has good dollars amount. Those dollars we'd love to bring into Longmont for Longmont Housing Authority activities, but we just can't get there. Um, by design or default, we're just kind of hanging in the wind.
It just seems to me that Boulder Housing Partners in the City of, in the City of Boulder got something that now no one else can get. Um, the equity there is very questionable.
I would just add one of the, Mayor Coombs, Council Darren Anson, Chairman of Longmont Housing Authority. One other thing, a question was asked, where it's really our, the question was really, is what are our heartburn with this agreement? I think Michael eloquently laid those out. I think a fundamental problem that we have with it is, is surrounding the loan and deed of trust. On our balance sheet, that's a liability. It's maybe construed as a contingent liability, which restricts our ability to not only recast a note, apply for additional funding. It's looked at, um, by those underwriters as a loan. Um, so with others, um, grants that we've received, or other forms of protecting taxpayers' money, it's, it's a service contract. It's an IGA, and that's frankly what we proposed and what we'd like to get to. And I think that would, what we're asking for council to do is to ask, um, the county commissioners to consider that in direct staff. That's, that's simply the root of this.
Councilmember Bagley.
I have a note. Hopefully it'll work. Sorry, yes, I have a wand. You guys change it, I'm gonna beat you. No, just kidding. The, I, I look at it as, you've got, I mean, I know Commissioner Gardner. I also know one of their attorneys, Mark Darty. He's a good friend, disclosing now that I like him a lot. Um, but the good thing is, good friends can disagree. And, uh, my wife and I negotiate every weekend, where are we gonna eat dinner on Saturday afternoon? And, uh, if we can't agree, we wind up going home and having mac and cheese, and nobody's happy. And so, uh, what I read, when I read this, is, I mean, when I read it and when I hear you talk, you're here saying, it's a bad deal. And that's what I'm hearing from you. And so, uh, yeah, so, I mean, just because parties can't come to terms doesn't mean that either one's wrong. It just means that from your perspective, places and positions is just, you're not gonna do business. So I mean, I, I don't think, I mean, if it's been two and a half years, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned, or the question in my mind is, why is the county commissioner and the attorneys here? It must be pretty important that we accept it. Why are you here bringing it before council? It must be pretty important, you know, or else you wouldn't be bringing it to our attention. But my instinct and gut is just to not do it. If it's a bad deal, it's a bad deal. You can't force anybody. You know, it reminds me of somebody when I was selling a car, showing up and just screaming and crying that I wasn't giving them a fair price. Well, you don't gotta buy it. And so, I mean, I, I guess my advice is, you know, I'm not gonna chastise the county and get, I mean, they're, it's their money. We voted for it. Um, goes to show that you better be careful what you vote for. And, uh, but it's their money. We can't force them.
Right.
And so, uh, we, we don't have to, well, I mean, it's our money as a county, but it's not our money as a city. And so, uh, you know, I guess what I'm thinking is just, I mean, every word in here screams, we shouldn't do this. And so my advice is, if you're asking my input, and it sounds like you are, my advice is just say, no, thank you. You must graciously decline and figure out something else. And, uh, move on, and if other people think it's a good deal, they do it, and if you think it's a bad deal, you don't do it. I think it's pretty simple. At least those are my thoughts, without getting into the contract language and reliving two and a half years with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So originally, when you applied for this, you thought it was a grant?
When we applied for it, the language of the application had grant, the word grant throughout it. Then there was a service contract requirement. That's even in the bond, the ballot language.
What does the service, what does that language mean?
Well, it says it's some sort of binding, you know, it's sort of the, the body of the, of whatever gets negotiated is what they're probably calling a service contract, and they can speak to it themselves. Um, our view of a service contract could simply have been an IGA. And we actually almost got there, and that's what Boulder Housing Partners got. Um, so the language of the original RFP was conflicting, because it had this agreement that had been used with the nonprofits for a number of years, yet it's talked about the, you know, grant throughout the, and I have all that stuff here, you know, not to relive it, but it was a grant. We thought we were applying for a grant with service agreement requirements, and I think Councilmember Bagley's correct. Our view of it was, you know, obviously we operate in grant fields and those get in the world, and that gets restricted, and, and there are components to protect those dollars. Um, and we, we thought, okay, well, run, it's going to be the administrative building of Longmont Housing Authority. That's what the money was for.
So, and any of the other grants that you've ever received, have you had a service contract that, that required a deed of trust?
There are grants for much more money that do require notes and deeds of trust. That's not incorrect. We do it with the City of, of Longmont for some of their housing trust funds. Um, we also just get land use, use restriction agreements from CHAF, for example, for even more sums of money. A, a use restriction agreement satisfies them, a recorded use restriction agreement, because again, it's government-to-government requirement.
Right. Are, are those terms generally more clear than the terms?
Absolutely. They end, and they end within the timeframe of a typical mortgage, 30, 40 years, 20 years, 18 years. Yeah, the 99-year piece is a real piece that's concerning us. Uh, that is one element. The idea that we'd have to ask permission for us to utilize the building as leverage to do other things, that, that's distasteful. Um, especially since it takes two and a half years to get to this point. We can only imagine what that would take to get the permission from the county to, uh, exercise, do it in a transaction. So we're, you know, there's not a lot in here. For $150,000, it's a good sales pitch for us.
Well, uh, in, in this letter, you're, it says here, uh, that you would like our direction as to whether to accept it under the terms or reject it, and I am with Councilmember Bagley, I would reject it. I wouldn't do it either if it's not putting you in a better position. The 99 years seems very excessive to me. And I always thought a grant was a grant and not a loan, and this clearly looks like a loan to me.
Councilmember Whit.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it seems like, um, the county's kind of facing the same thing that, that we face a lot, and that is, we, we, we've had a culture of, it can't be done. It just, it's not gonna work. It has to be this way. I think that's changing, and, uh, we're, as a culture, we're figuring out, how can we get to yes? What, what do we need to do in order to get to a resolution for, for all sides concerned? And it sounds like the county is perhaps struggling with that as well. Um, I, I would concur with my council members. If it's not a good deal, um, trust your gut and walk away. What I would say, though, is that in regards to Boulder Housing Partners, it should either be both or neither, and one should not be given a deal, well, it's not a deal, it was specially crafted for them. And yet now, it is not, that same option is not being extended to you, which I find to be unfair and not equitable. But it sounds as if the county has decided that they will not move off their position, and there's nothing really that we can do about that, but I would trust your guts and, and, uh, decline.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the question that I would ask is that, the benefit that you would derive from getting that $150,000 and combining it with what other funds you had to buy down the debt, how much does it save you, and is it really worth it?
Uh, that particular benefit is, that window's closed. Uh, we had an open agreement in our loan documents with our first bank lender to buy down debt and re-amortize the remaining debt. Uh, we, we have a five-year window that closed in August of this year. So all we would really be doing with this dollars would be providing it as principal to the, um, loan prepayment. We wouldn't re-amortize the debt, so we wouldn't see a monetary benefit every month. We'd obviously pay it that off. The, the loan would be paid off faster, um, and that's, that's the reality at this point. Had we been able to blend the hundred and fifty with our own dollars and buy down the debt, we would have seen a realization of about five hundred dollars a month. I mean, it would have been marginal, but given current rates.
How many years?
The larger maybe question is, this is just one application, sort of a test of water, how will this function and work? But it is, it is a viable source of revenue, if we could come to a reasonable agreement for the next six years. This is a tax that got extended in 2008 for ten years, so it ends in 2018. So that probably is the larger question. We can walk away from this one, but there may be another opportunity, and we'll be back in the square one, because, you know, the county is really kind of holding to what they have crafted and their unwillingness to improve upon it.
Well, you gotta have a buyer, and you gotta have a seller, and in this case, there's no agreement, so I would move on and look at greener pastures.
Councilmember Santos.
Actually, I'll skip, because Councilmember Levinson has a question.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Santos. You know, sometimes I think that while this has been a very arduous and uncomfortable situation for both parties, it has given some information as to how to construct things moving forward. And so, frankly, this may not work out, but there's useful information. There's sometimes a silver lining to a bad deal. You learn things, and you learn how to talk to people differently, maybe. And I think that with the county sitting here, hearing all this and knowing they've gone back and forth, I'm sure they'll go back and revisit some things, and perhaps in the future, there could be something else worked out. This might just start other creative juices flowing with looking at other, maybe constraints that would, that would allow you to accept the money, and then allow them the surety of not having that asset that they invested in, you know, disappear. And I think we're all understanding that they have to be sure that they secure the asset, and there could be other ways to do it. So I, you know, they're sitting here in the audience, and, you know, people can get along, and you can agree to disagree. And again, you know, it might have been nice to know about this a year ago, but sometimes that doesn't happen. And I understand everybody's made a good faith effort, but that's sometimes all you can ask for.
Councilmember Santos.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Well, as liaison to Longmont Housing Authority, they came, they had a meeting, a joint meeting, and I was present, and they actually had a discussion whether to kick this to council to ask for our help. And afterwards, I said, "Yeah, I would have, had you asked my opinion," but, you know, I don't talk a whole lot at my boards and commissions, I want them to drive the discussion. They came up with, again, they came up with the decision to ask council to intervene. Yeah, it's a bad deal. What the county's doing to Longmont Housing Authority, it's a bad deal. I don't know what you guys are thinking. They are a part of the city of Longmont, and asked to, and they, if I'm not mistaken, they, Longmont Housing Authority, so you guys would do a deed of trust with the city?
We offered several technical solutions that would work in the affordable housing industry that were rejected. And one of them were to offer the city of Longmont a note and deed of trust for the 1228 Main Street asset, to provide a note and deed of trust in a public, to a public body, our superior entity, which is the city of Longmont, and it was rejected. And there have been a couple other mechanisms that we've offered that were rejected. Again, this is not our first rodeo.
Sure.
We accept millions of dollars in grants on all our projects all around this town, and there's a variety of ways to protect the county's desire to protect the taxpayer dollars, which is not outside of our purview either. So yes, that's correct.
Again, I've talked to several board members of nonprofits, and they were always under the impression it was a grant, not a loan. But of course, these are nonprofits who are desperate for money, and will, apparently, they'll sign anything to get that money, which is, I find, you know, questionable. Councilmember Bagley said deplorable, you know, and ninety, I don't know, how many people have a ninety-nine-year mortgage? No one, except Councilmember Samori raising his hand facetiously, no one has a ninety-nine year mortgage. It's unconscionable, especially when it's supposed to be a grant. Now, and the mayor asked, should we have Boulder County come up and address some of this? Oh, I'd love to hear this. Because again, I asked Commissioner Gardner, is this a loan or a grant? And I got the same answer. It's both. What is it? Is it a loan or a grant? Because if it's a loan, and we're going into 2018, I don't know if I can support that, especially when you're not working with a quasi governmental agency. We have IGAs, I mean, I guess we're gonna have to start looking at our IGAs a little bit more closely when it comes to dealing with Boulder County. You know, I wanna play nice and be fair and equitable to everyone. I wouldn't take this deal. In fact, when we have our meeting with the commissioners, I'm gonna bring this up again. So plan on it. Because I think what you're doing to the Longmont Housing Authority, and you can smile all you want, and I'm not talking to you, Commissioner Gardner, smirk and smile, you know, the debates are going on right now, and people are probably smirking and smiling all over the place. But I think it's what you're doing to housing authorities, and what you're trying to do to Boulder Housing Partners, and trying to get them to redo their deal, because apparently somebody made a mistake. Come on. Treat them equally. But I wouldn't take this deal. And again, I do, when we do meet with the commissioners, I wanna have this discussion. I think what they're doing is atrocious, especially with taxpayer dollars, when it was supposed to be a grant, and now it's turned into a loan. Where is it in the language? I don't see it anywhere.
Well, I guess since we have the commissioners out here, and we've only heard one side of the story, would you guys like to add anything?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Santos.
No, I was looking forward to hearing from them, but apparently, we're not gonna get anything from the commissioners.
No, they said they'll answer questions, if you have a question. Councilmember Whit.
I do have a question, and direct to anybody. Is it, it sounds to me as if the housing authorities are kind of a different beast than your usual not-for-profit. Can you explain to me why the housing authorities must be treated exactly like other not-for-profits? I understand wanting to keep everything equal across your, the people, the organizations that you work with. Can you explain why they have to be treated differently? And if a mistake was made with the Boulder Housing Partners, it appears as if another mistake could be made in favor of Longmont Housing Authority. Explain why it was a mistake? How come it's a mistake? And why it can't be worked around?
Mayor, Council. My name is Jeremy Durham. I'm an Assistant County Attorney with the Boulder County Attorney's Office. My ordinary duties at the County Attorney's Office is to represent the Boulder County Housing Authority, so I'm speaking to you primarily in that capacity, as an individual that's worked on these deals, as between the Boulder County Housing Authority, which is a legally separate entity from Boulder County. We've done five Worthy Cause Agreements between those two entities, each of them with a note and deed of trust to secure that grant. So I understand that the question was, is there something different about governmental entities, in particular, housing authorities, that should merit different terms than nonprofits receive? And so, this is ultimately a commissioner's decision, and the commissioner's decision up until this point has been no. And I'd like to talk about just a couple of things, you know, we heard tonight, and then in general, just housing authority law, and just sort of practical issues that affect housing authorities. So first of all, housing authorities do go under. It happens. They dissolve. And while it may be in the bylaws of the Longmont Housing Authority, that city council steps in and takes over those assets, and we would then be in agreement as Boulder County with the city of Longmont, Longmont Housing Authority's creditors might feel differently. And there's an asset there that the creditors of the Longmont Housing Authority would want to take over and use for a purpose other than what was specifically designated by the taxpayers and by Boulder County in administering the Worthy Cause Funds. Now, that truthfully is somewhat rare. It happens, but it's somewhat rare. It's something we wanna guard for as attorneys and advise the commissioners, because it does happen. What's much more common, and what we're more worried about with housing authorities, is housing projects. Housing projects, housing developments do go under, and it happens all the time. And what's the difference is, a lot of times, a housing development, which is an eligible project under Worthy Cause, is owned by a private entity, for example, a tax credit partnership, that's only partially owned by the housing authority. Now, in that case, if Boulder County, as the steward of these Worthy Cause Funds, hasn't done its due diligence and secured its funds in that deal, just like every other granting entity that would come into that deal, including the federal government with their CDVG funds, either through the state or perhaps the city of Longmont through Kathy Fevler's program, the city of Boulder's Home Consortium, the federal home loan bank, everybody secures their sources in those deals, because they do go under, and you wanna be able, as the granting entity, to get those funds back and use them for what they were intended to be used for. And so, that's our position on the housing authority non-profit distinction. Other question I heard is Boulder Housing Partners. So I was not involved on the Boulder Housing Partners discussion, neither was Mark Dougherty, my colleague, also from the Assistant, also Assistant County Attorney with the County Attorney's Office. What I can say is our position is that was a mistake. What does that mean? It means that it was based on a legal position that our office, the County Attorney's Office, no longer supports. Whether or not that mistake can be made again, so to speak, which is a good way of putting it, I, my advice to the commissioners is not going to be to make that mistake again, because I don't think it's in the best interest of the county. And, you know, we're here to try and sort of conflict resolution month, as Michael mentioned. We wanna work with LHI on this, and that's why we sent this letter, offering all these other alternatives, you know, we can put the security somewhere else if that helps. We'd consider a letter of credit. We can talk to our commissioners about even considering a letter of credit, possibly partially funded with those Worthy Cause Funds, to where Longmont can just sort of walk away, Boulder County would have the security, but LHI would have these funds unattached to a property. That's not an option that the Longmont Housing Authority explored. We put that in the letter, and to my knowledge, they haven't followed up about that. That's something we'd be interested in. We wanna see these funds in the community here in Longmont. We wanna be able to help the Longmont Housing Authority.
I would just say that it sounds like you're willing to continue to work on it, and if I could talk to Commissioner Gardner for just a second? So Commissioner Gardner, it sounds like your staff is willing to work on this, and would, is your field that the county commissioners would be willing to relook at some of their policies in order to come to an equitable agreement?
Well, I think one of our concerns, Deb Gardner, County Commissioner, I think one of our concerns is, I've been in two meetings where, you know, various aspects of concern have been risen, and then we've, I think, had solutions to those, and then when we have the next meeting, there's a different issue. And I, yeah, I mean, it is conflict resolution month, so maybe there is some way we can come together and find out what the distinct issues are, and what would the distinct solutions be. But I can tell you that, you know, there is a part of me that, you know, agrees with some of the other comments, that maybe this is not the best deal for anyone, and we should walk away from it, and then tomorrow's another day.
Yeah. It seems as if the, bringing the housing authorities into the pot, as it were, to give Worthy Cause money to, might be something that needs to be looked at once again. But it sounds as if that you're willing to work on it, and I'm hoping that, as the representative of our, of Longmont, that you will continue to fight and try to look out for the best interests of Longmont especially. So thank you so much for answering my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. You mentioned that the Boulder County Housing Authority has these type of agreements?
Yes, that's correct.
And the Boulder County Housing Authority are the commissioners?
They're legally separate entities.
They're legally separate entities, but they are the commissioners.
The board of the Boulder County Housing Authority is the same three individuals as the Boulder County Commissioners.
That are county commissioners, so they're the county commissioners. Just wanna get that distinction. So that's interesting, you know, I can understand that they would agree for this, because they are in fact sitting as the Boulder County Housing Authority?
Yeah, and I can also say, as Boulder County Housing Authority's attorney, that we do agree to notes and deeds of trust with the city of Boulder in administering the home consortium funds. I believe we have done it before in the past. Karen perhaps speaks to this better with the city of Longmont, and we've at least explored doing that and applied for funds with them. Working in the affordable housing industry, as the director, Michael Reese, mentioned, this isn't uncommon with grants. And I think the statement was, when there's larger sums of money, they do it. And my question is, what's different here? Why does the sum of money make a difference? Why does the sum of money mean that the terms should be different? As Boulder County's attorney, my advice to them is going to be to protect the taxpayers' funds regardless of the amount. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money.
And I agree with you, but ninety-nine years?
Yeah.
And where in the ballot language does that come into play?
So the ninety-nine years is a discretionary item, it's a policy item. As an attorney, I don't have a legal opinion on that. We could ask either Megan or Michelle if they wanted to speak to that, but that's been up to this point, what the county commissioners have designated, and that's been the case from the inception of the program several years ago. Now, the way this typically works is the granting entity has the discretion on this, and it's sort of all over the map. You know, you look at Longmont, now, I'm not sure exactly what they did, but my understanding is it would be somewhat less than ninety-nine years, based on the conversation tonight, when they award their CDVG funds, their home funds. City of Boulder administers home consortium funds to Broomfield County, City of Broomfield, to the greater Boulder County area, including us, the Boulder County Housing Authority. Their notes and deeds of trusts are in perpetuity. It doesn't stop at ninety-nine years, it's forever. And that's because their political and policy decision has been that those funds be used for that purpose in perpetuity. The commissioners sort of split the difference there, is my understanding.
I just find that, and Michael, you may mention that some of the, your concerns have been addressed in the email, in the letter. Have you seen any of these newer proposals that the county is offering? You're gonna have to turn on the mic.
Am I on? The letter from the county was sort of the last correspondence that we received, and it came about four weeks ago. We met two weeks, we met last week, last Tuesday. There was not a lot of movement in the conversation about the items of concern. The ninety-nine years was, while Jerry's correct in that it's a policy decision which has discretion over, or the county has discretion over it, it was certainly not offered to be reduced. And in fact, they seem to like that particular piece. You know, we're not really here to negotiate every component of the IGA, of the agreement. We're sharing what our concerns were. The letter sort of came out of nowhere, we had to respond, we responded. Again, good friends can differ, we don't need the money, sort of past. We are a little concerned about how we would access those funds for worthy projects that Longmont Housing Authority might do into the future, but, you know, this is our office building, and it's not a residential apartment complex. It's a pretty easy one to provide Worthy Cause tax money on, and we just haven't been able to get there in the language. And if there's willingness to really pick apart this agreement, the staff at the county need to hear it from the county commissioners. Again, we can't, you can't force them to change their program, and we can't force them to change their program. We can just acknowledge that their programs constructs are just simply improbable for us to enter into it. It doesn't meet our business model, and, you know, we can spin this around for all night, but...
And like I said, I, you know, looking at this, and apparently, the unwillingness of the county to move.
I believe that there is unwillingness in the county to move. It's been two and a half years, it's not very hard to craft an agreement that would meet everybody's needs, and, you know, so that's my view, and I think that would be my board's view as well.
Yeah, and I, having been at the meetings, that's the board's view, definitely. But a mistake may have been made, but it may have been made in the benefit for allowing housing authorities that are quasi governmental to access Worthy Cause tax. There's the benefit. What you're doing is you're excluding. And, you know, that's a statement, it's not a question. And, you know, we, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that should come into the city of Longmont. We pay this tax. I'll be wary about the next one that comes up.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I have a...
I have a question about something you stated where you said some of the funds can be secured or a letter of credit can be provided where the funds are used from the grant to secure it? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, and I mean, that's something that I think we could talk about with our commissioners and we'd have to analyze whether or not that's, would be an eligible use of the grant. In either case, it's something that we would consider if Longmont's able to post a letter of credit or some other type of security to cover this obligation.
But if it's going to be secured by the grant money, wouldn't that reduce the grant money available for use?
Yes.
So where's the benefit?
Well, suppose the cost of a letter of credit was ten thousand dollars and Longmont Housing Authority has been awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A hundred and forty thousand dollars is better than zero. And what I'm hearing right now is Longmont Housing Authority is going to walk away. And so that's the benefit.
That's, the walk away is not because of the letter of credit. It's just, I mean, to me, it's just, you're discounting it. And why would you need to discount it? Because that's a hundred, you know, ten thousand dollars that could be put to good use. The issue, it sounds like more than anything else, is the length of the security, the deed. And that does seem unreasonable because any, any bank, you know, wouldn't exceed 30 years. And again, if it falls back to the city of Longmont, if they were to default and it falls back to the city of Longmont, even if there was a bank involved on the loan, then the city of Longmont would be responsible for that debt. And the bank isn't going to just take it and sell it without negotiating with the city. So you already have reasonable security there.
Yeah, and on that point, myself and the attorney for the Longmont Housing Authority just disagree on a legal opinion that the properties would automatically transfer back to the city of Longmont.
Okay.
I mean, they're legally separate entities. And if the Longmont Housing Authority were to go under, or a project were to go under and stop making payments for a particular property, the bank that holds that property as collateral would foreclose on the property. It would not revert to the city of Longmont and Boulder County and its citizens would be out the worthy cause funds.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Koms. So I just, so what I want to be clear on is so the Boulder situation was voted on by the county commissioners, right? But acting as the Boulder County Housing Authority. Is that correct?
I'm not sure, I understand the question.
What I'm understanding is.
The Boulder situation you're referring to.
The what? So what I'm saying is, in the case of the Boulder agreement, it was a mistake. Wasn't the county commissioners that voted on that? The people, the actual people who serve as county commissioners, did they vote on it?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a vote, just they approved it, yes.
Okay, so they approved it, but it just dawned on me that, okay, so they approved it, but they're also the same people that if it was a mistake, could rectify it.
Well, an agreement has been entered into now with Boulder Housing Partners. And so.
But aren't they the same group that approves both?
Boulder Housing Partners is the city of Boulder's housing authority. Boulder County Housing Authority is the entity previously discussed where the county commissioners sit as the board. So with the Boulder County Housing Authority, every time we've ever done worthy cause, there's been a note and deed of trust.
Okay, so my question is, is there anything different? Okay, so other than the fact that the property, if they default, reverts to the county, what happens in the event that it defaults with the Boulder agreement?
With the Boulder Housing Partners? So the deal that issued there, if there was a default on that property, the worthy cause funds would be lost. We could, Boulder County could sue Boulder Housing Partners to try and recapture the funds under the service contract. If Boulder Housing Partners doesn't have the funds available, the funds would be lost. They would not be able to be reinvested in other eligible projects in the community.
Okay, is that the only difference between the deals?
Difference, I'm not sure, I understand the question.
What I'm saying is the agreement that you have with the city of Boulder and the proposal roundabout you've been trying to reach the city of Longmont, the Longmont Housing Authority. What's the difference other than that piece?
That, I believe, is the primary and perhaps only difference. I don't know if Michael disagrees.
I'm just curious.
The main issue has been the note.
Would you agree with that, John? Or Darren?
I would simply say, again, back to the same discussion we had before, it's a note and deed of trust secured by the property. That's the major difference.
Okay.
It's fundamentally a loan. Fundamentally, it's on the balance sheet as a liability. That's the major concern we have. And if I can just address the letter of credit from my financial background, the letter of credit is posted as a performance letter of credit to the county of Boulder. And it's issued by, typically by a financial institution. There's costs associated with that performance letter of credit and money that would then go to the housing authority in that regard. Again, access alone, again, is considered liability. Financially, not a good decision, does not meet our business model stated before.
Just a comment that I think it's a common feeling. And this is, this is just a, I'm not bashing the county commissioners. I like the county commissioners. I like the legal staff, as I said. But sometimes there's a feeling in Longmont that we're the little brother and we're going to be bigger than Boulder pretty quick. And any time that the city of Longmont is treated differently than the city of Boulder, we don't like that. And so just because we walk away from a deal, doesn't mean that we forget. And so essentially what I'm hearing and my advice is still, you know, walk away. If it's a bad deal, walk away. No one's going to be mad with you. We'll take the bullet if they do. But at the end of the day, you can't fix it with the city of Boulder because you've entered into an agreement with them. And if I were Boulder, I'd be like, no. You sold me a thirty thousand dollar car for 10? Tough, tough luck, you know? So I doubt you're going to be able to fix it, but someone was overzealous in giving Boulder, the city of Boulder, a good deal. And they're not as zealous to give Longmont the same deal. And that smacks of favoritism, incompetence, I don't know. But if somebody made a mistake and they're not willing to do it for us when we're half the county, that's not cool. And so there's no way to fix it. We can't force you. But from where I'm sitting, you know, you know, now practice, I don't know. But somebody made a mistake. And when you make a mistake, you fix it. And the way to fix it is half the citizens of the county receive the deal. The other half should get it. Now, I'm not going to ask you to do that, you know? There's voters, there's a future, there's newspapers present. That's your business. But as far as this deal goes, let's walk away and we'll just see what happens. But I wouldn't waste any more time on it.
Mayor, if I can kind of clarify one point on this one. There were some discussions about that if the Boulder Housing Authority were to go defunct, that it's not guaranteed that it would stay within the city of Longmont because of the other creditors. We also have to remember that if we start seeing that develop, then as a city, we can actually come in and take those agreements and shift it over to the city so they could become the board and then the city could go in and satisfy the debt to secure that in the future. And so you don't have the risk of an outside entity coming in with those properties. And so I wanted to make that clear, that there are remedies that are available before you ever go to that point that secures that asset. Because I didn't want the community to think that if this were to happen in the future, that there's a probability that that asset would be lost to the city of Longmont in really satisfying that purpose. If it were to happen five years from now, I think we would say we need to engage in this earlier so we can make sure that we protect our assets and how do we deal with that debt and assume that debt.
Thank you, Harold. Well, it kind of sounds like we're kind of all in agreement that at this point, we should just walk away from this particular deal and continue to work with the county commissioners on potential for restructuring some of the language so that it might be, some deals in the future could still come forward if we're willing to work in a collaborative manner. I guess that's my two cents. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're always willing to work in a collaborative manner. Haven't seen it from the county. And Councilmember Bagley, you're right. You're exactly right. Not always, you're not always right. But you're right in the fact that Boulder Housing Partners got a better deal. When Longmont was going for the money at the same time, apparently the county dragged its feet. Boulder Housing Partners got the IGA. Longmont Housing Authority didn't. I won't forget.
Okay, shall we move on to our next IOM? Oh, yeah, let's take a 10-minute break. That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
I'll get my camera. I'll get the picture.
Can I introduce the next item, Sarah?
Mayor, your next item is discussion on an ordinance to modify municipal code on solid waste collection to explicitly prohibit placement of tree limbs in public places. This item will be introduced by Bob Allen with Public Works.
Thanks. Mayor and Council, Bob Allen, Operations Manager, Public Works Natural Resources. I don't know how I got sandwiched in between all these big chewy items tonight. Mine's really small and teeny. So...
So I'll be brief.
Yeah. You will not need that for this presentation. So, well, I hope not. I actually do not have a formal presentation. The council communication actually was pretty much all the information we had. I was trying to find a way to extend this for 20 to 30 minutes and have a snappy slideshow, but I couldn't come up with it. But I did want to answer questions, and just to summarize quickly, we do from time to time continue to have problems with the illicit disposal of tree limbs in public places. So we have to enforce that, and our city attorney's office has advised us there are a couple co-changes we can make that would make this work a little better and facilitate our enforcement. One is to remove some ambiguous language that led to some confusion, I think on residents' parts on what was allowed, what wasn't. And that's the part that's stricken out in this draft you have. And then the other piece is to actually explicitly prohibit the disposal of tree limbs. We already have some provisions that talk about illegal dumping and disposal, but this makes it more clear. So, we do, and I know we were here a couple years ago for quite a few different sessions to talk about a lot of the different services that we offer through sanitation. Two of them address tree limbs. One is our spring branch collection program, I think most of you are aware of. It's a free program to all residents. We do advertise it, and we'll have, and we continue to have the rules associated with that posted in there. So, that's, we hope, clear to the residents. And then the other option is, of course, to use our tree limb disposal center, which is part of our overall waste diversion center. So that option exists for residents for free as well. We have some other programs for those who are a little more in need in the community, and those are collaborated with community services. So we also reach out beyond those two as needed. And that's a little more ad hoc, but it is available, and it's something that community services helps us with. So those options all exist. We don't have a big problem out there, but we have some problems with enforcement, and this would help us make that a little easier.
Well, I sure appreciate how I go to the tree limb diversion. They always give my dogs doggy treats at the window, so...
You've been bribing me.
Yes, and I did claim that on my report.
Doggy treats are great.
I guess I would like to, if everybody else is in agreement, to just direct staff to move forward with the proposed changes of Chapter 14, Point 12, and bring back an ordinance at a regular city council meeting for approval. All right. Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to know, if you're not able to put these tree limbs or leaves in a public area, where are the people that social service agencies are helping collect them, put them? Because they're in violation if the city's not going to pick them up, but we're assisting somebody with maybe a volunteer group that'll come do it. If they put it in the public right of way, they're in violation. So how do we, when you mentioned that we do have a mechanism to help people?
Those are all programs that are construed under the authority that the Public Works Natural Resources Director has to allow for that placement in those cases. So if it's part of the program that we're aware of and we recognize, then that's fine. That's not a problem.
So there's an exemption?
Correct.
And I guess what this really is to address is someone that just starts piling up branches between the sidewalk and the curb, and the pile gets bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. And then they, or people sweep all their leaves into the gutter, massive piles of leaves and stuff like that. So you would just then cite people and give them, what, 24 hours to clear it? Or then it becomes a code violation?
It does, Mayor and Council. That is a process I'm not intimately involved with, but they do have a process they work through with appropriate notification and trying to work with the resident first. I think the last thing we want to do is write a ticket and have a fine or have a municipal court case, so we try to avoid that. I know code enforcement does, but yes, it's always preferential to work and try to avoid it.
Right.
Okay, I guess shall we vote on our motion? It passes seven to zero. Thank you, Bob.
Mayor, your next three items, I believe, will be introduced by Dale Radamaker with Public Works and Natural Resources. First of those items is the presentation of proposed city acquisition of Boulder County land adjacent to Rogers Grove, and he will be accompanied by Kim Sugar, also with Natural Resources.
Mayor Combs and Members of Council, and Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. And as Sarah has mentioned, the next three items are actually intertwined. We actually did that on purpose to try to bring items to council so that you can consider them in their totality as opposed in isolation. Several of these also are ones that may be topics of discussion with the Boulder County Commissioners coming up next week, so we also wanted to brief you on those issues as well, so that you have an opportunity to ask us questions about those and to clarify any particular issues that the city may have. And so the three items deal with, the link between them all, obviously, is the St. Brain River. And they range from the longstanding Greenway program that the city has had to build the St. Brain Greenway that dates back to 1992. And the city has done, I believe, an awesome job of building that Greenway. And we're really looking for council consideration and further direction with regards to the final pieces of that, really sort of the bookends on each end of that project. I believe Barb Brunt came up and spoke earlier about the particular connection out to the west from Golden Ponds out to Airport Road. We have a similar type of issue as we go to the east, where we are, as a city, scheduled to go out to about 119th, where we then will hook up with St. Brain State Park, as well as our communities and neighbors to the east. So those are policy issues that we want to bring to the council, get your direction on. They're ones that have been included in your capital improvements program. But we also know the one that is vying for competition with that, if you will, is the River Corridor project down in the core of the city. And, Council, you've been clear that you are interested in trying to figure out, is there value to either redirect or reprioritize some of that funding more into the core of the city? I think we're going to talk about that with you a little bit tonight. A lot of the issues rely both on timing of when it's going to be possible to do these different types of projects, as well as the restricted funding that we're using to build it. By that, predominantly on the greenland, I mean the Conservation Trust Fund money, that is limited on what it can be spent on. And then I think with regards to the acquisition of land from Boulder County, that is all property that's right in the Rogers Grove area. That the city has had a long presence in that area. And I believe what we're looking again for council direction on is whether or not you believe it's in the interest of the city of Longmont to have control over that land, essentially everything north of Boston Avenue up to the river and including the River Corridor. We think there's some pluses and minuses to that. We want to talk to you about that and give direction on whether or not to bring back an agreement to effectuate that. And so with that, if there's no questions on the brief overview, I'm going to have Kim start off on the Rogers Grove project.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Kim Sugar, Natural Resources Manager. And Sarah, if you could put up the map, please. Thanks. An email came out this afternoon that included the correct documents for the, or the land acquisition documents, including the conservation easement. Apologize, the correct ones were not in the original packet. There were some minor differences, but one of the biggest ones was the actual usage of the property. The old document said that there could only be six events, but the agreements that the county and the city agreed on actually said that the city can have whatever events as long as we maintain the context of the land, which is open space, paths of recreation, wildlife, which is currently all the events we have out there, and the programming is in compliance with that. So just a quick overview with the map. It's approximately 83 acres of open space property that is being proposed to convey from Boulder County to the city of Longmont. And as you can see, it is west of Sunset, east of Hoover, north of Boston Avenue, and it does encompass Rogers Grove District Park, as well as the St. Brain Greenway and portions of the St. Brain Creek. The acquisition includes fee simple interest and also the water rights, which were outlined in the documents provided. And with that, the city would then convey back a conservation easement back to the county to maintain the property for the functions stated. Additionally, the county will contribute $50,000 towards the St. Brain Creek Riparian Protection Plan, which is the restoration of the creek near Rogers Grove, including stabilizing the banks, because right now there's erosion, and when you go out there, you do see orange fencing to ensure the public doesn't encounter that creek there, and restoring some of the habitat and reverting the creek. And the cost to the city is approximately $20,000 a year, and that does seem high right now, but that is actually taking into account an escalation of about 3% a year. And that'll be additional cost to the city on the property, which is mainly weed management and mowing and maintaining some of the paths in that area. The city already does spend approximately $19,000 a year at Rogers Grove, which includes maintaining the shelters and the restroom facilities and the trees and all the infrastructure that already exists. So with that, staff is looking for direction from council and letter to move forward and bring acquisition documents back.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Combs. My question is, first of all, what are the water rights worth?
The actual costs, I am not sure. I do have Ron Stewart, Boulder County's here, so he can also answer some of those questions. I don't know if Dale, do you know?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Bagley, what are they worth? I can describe what they are. The value of them is subjective because they're not typically bought and sold. One of them is an interest in the Cushman Ditch, which is a fairly senior, actually very senior water right on the St. Brain. And then the other one is the, I think it's about a 54-acre foot decree in the Fairgrounds Pond, and that's the pond just north of Boston Avenue. That's a fairly junior decree. Nonetheless, it is a storage decree on the river, and it is restricted on what it can be used for, though. So it's not the kind of water right that we're going to pick up and take to the treatment plant. It's really historic water that's going to be needed to keep that property maintained. So it's not something we're going to sell and take it into the treatment plant.
Well, the reason I ask is because, basically, we're picking up the land for 20,000 bucks a year, meaning that we have to pay for it to maintain it. So right now, the county pays for that. If we vote yes, then we have to pay for it. Is there a cost savings that we get from law? I mean, it says in the packet about law enforcement savings, et cetera. Are we going to be saving money? Are we going to be able to get a benefit out of it? Or are we just going to be able to say, well, now we own it? Good for us, and it comes with an expense?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Bagley, some of the benefits are things like basic consolidation of land ownership so that the issue of maintenance is coordinated. It also would allow for the property to be annexed into the city, so it would come under the city's jurisdiction for public safety, which I think is an important aspect when predominantly the folks out there are city of Longmont residents, certainly at the rhythm on the river and those kinds of events that we hold out there. City has also made investments out in this particular area in the form of the restroom facilities and the Roger Grove improvements. So, one thing that is important that I don't know that we made clear as well is that the county did acquire these parcels over time using county funds. They are transferring it to the city at no cost for the land itself, and the offset is the maintenance. And so what we did is we looked at sort of the annualized cost of that maintenance as opposed to the value of what the land was, and we think in the long run, it works out for the city. I think our ability to manage the O and M and maintenance out there is certainly, will be some additional cost to the city. So the question of the council is, is that worth it?
And that's what I'm asking. I mean, that's the only question, meaning, will the land change at all? Meaning that right now, as a citizen of Longmont, we drive by it, we use it, am I going to see a difference between Boulder County ownership and the city of Longmont ownership? And if the answer is yes, the question is, will I see $20,000 worth? And if the answer is it's going to stay just the same, why not stick the county with the tab?
The only thing I would say to that, again, Mayor Combs and Councilmember Bagley, is that right now, we have a sort of a checkerboard of ownership and a checkerboard of where city facilities are vis-à-vis where county land is. And I think part of what we're trying to do in this action is also to clarify and correct those issues.
Jurisdictional issues.
Yeah. So, in the scheme of things, it is additional funds. I personally believe, if you care...
Yes, if you care.
I do believe, given the city's ownership of Golden Ponds, the work that we're doing with the Parks Master Plan right now, the fact that this is really central in your city, I think it makes sense for Longmont to have jurisdictional ownership and the ability to annex it into your city. That's my personal opinion.
Seems to be the $20,000 a year is kind of a small price to pay for such a big benefit, but that's kind of my feelings. Councilmember Samori.
I think where Councilman Bagley was going is, could we tie this to the LHA deal? So, the $20,000 in maintenance is above and beyond the $19,000 we currently spend, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, I guess when Councilmember Bagley asked, well, could you tell the difference? I guess, you know, in midsummer, when we stop cutting the grass, you know, you'll see where the county needs to come and cut their share. That might be the biggest difference you can see visually. So the idea to have the consolidation, to know where we need to stop... So the idea to have the consolidation, to know where we need to stop cutting the grass, you know, we don't have to worry about that anymore, and they can just keep the mowers running. The other question I had is, is because we have certain guidance from the Water Board and our water policy, when we annex this land, there is then no question about having enough water annexed in to have the kind of, well, it's basically non-development on the land. So do we need all those requirements? I mean, I know there are water rights that come with it, but are they sufficient for all that long-term use on the land?
So Mayor Combs and Councilmember Levison, the transfer of historic water rights would satisfy the city's raw water policy. And if we annexed it in as open space or parkland, that is the summation of the policy. So in other words, the policy doesn't call for additional water to be transferred because it's simply going to be left in its more natural state.
Thank you.
But I should add, too, that the annexation would go to the Water Board before it would come to City Council, if that's your direction.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I have some of the same concerns. It appears that the county is not wanting to maintain what they own and asking the city to take it over $20,000. Here, I don't know how it's going. And I get it. But as I've just seen with the previous discussion, beware Greeks bearing gifts. Has legal gone through this with a fine-tooth comb? Because I don't want to see another mistake on the county's part. It's my understanding that the county's going to be coming more and more to the city and asking us to start annexing potentially more and more unincorporated Boulder County. I have a little birdie on the wind just told me that. So especially with the Parks Master Plan, it's only $20,000, Mayor, but it's a $20,000 hit that we, you know, we're having a difficult time already maintaining our parks. I'm just throwing that out for the discussion.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I want to, Dale, who owns the mineral rights on this land?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Finley? I don't know if I know that right now. Kim, do we know that?
The county owns the mineral rights.
I would ask them to transfer those as well. And my second question is, are they going to give us the fairgrounds as well so that we can take care of it?
Councilmember Samori.
It's not part of the transaction.
Yes.
Ron Stewart is available, by the way, too, to answer some of those questions on behalf of the county, if you would like that. Okay?
Ron Stewart, Director of Parks and Open Space for Boulder County. What I would say to you is, this wasn't really our idea. We didn't come to the city and say, oh, why don't we give you this 87 acres? We began a discussion with your staff, which I think was a very collaborative discussion, where we were looking at the fact that Rogers Grove exists on a piece of property that is county-owned. We had an agreement when Rogers Grove started between the city and the county about how to, basically gave the city the right to maintain and operate it. And frankly, if you don't want to do this deal, we could continue with that kind of deal into the future. But the two staffs from the county side and from the city side got together and thought that probably this land was better off in the city's portfolio because of the St. Brain Greenway and because of Rogers Grove than it was in our portfolio. And it's land that, over the years, the county spent more than a half a million dollars to buy the land. We spent the money to make the lakes that are out there, to do the improvements that are there. And we're willing to let the city of Longmont have that for really no cost. We're also willing to put some money into the St. Brain River project. It isn't something that has to happen. If you don't want to do it, we won't do it. We'll certainly work with you to have a maintenance agreement on Rogers Grove. But this wasn't something that was just kind of our idea, and we came over to Dale and Kim and said, why don't we do this? It really came from the city looking at where do you have ownership at in the area? And is it a difficulty that you have city facilities on land that you don't own? And kind of that's how it all started. So what I would also say, Mayor Protan Santos, is that it's my understanding, it's been through our lawyers, your lawyers, about three or four times, and there was considerable back and forth on what it should say, both in terms of the acquisition and in terms of the conservation easement. If it's not ripe, we're more than willing to work on it. And as to the issue of the fairgrounds, I think the balance of them, I think the county has generally said that it doesn't, it would be willing to look at the annexation of the fairgrounds if somehow all of those rural uses that occurred there would not be a problem with the land actually being in a city, which is not really designed much for horses and sheep and goats and pigs and all of that in the same way that the county fairgrounds is. So I just wanted to be clear that this, we worked on together. We've been working on it for quite a while. We're happy to do it. We're happy also not to do it and to work out something different, if that's your preference.
Thank you, Ron, for that clarification.
So, Ron, don't walk away yet. So the question of the mineral rights wasn't answered.
Yeah, the mineral right, if we own the mineral rights, they would come to the city with the land. But we would also have a conservation easement on it that would say that if the rights are not currently leased, that there is not a right of the surface owner to lease them, which is similar to every other piece of open space we have, or that we've spent open space money on. That's kind of our policy. So you'd get the mineral rights, but there wouldn't really be an ability to lease them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Witt? Oh, you're still on. Okay.
We're switching players. So Mayor Protan Santos brought up a good point is the maintenance. I mean, yeah, it's only $20,000. And if we're having difficulties maintaining current parks, where is that money going to come from?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Samori, we did include, I believe, in our master planning process, that's part of the equation we're looking at, not just this particular land, but all the future parks and everything that's yet to be built in the city. Options for where the funding can come from, it can come from your open space fund, or it can come from your general fund. Those are really the two sources of where the funding would be drawn from. I do want to sort of reiterate what Mr. Stewart mentioned. This was an initiative that the city staff did go to the county to see if we couldn't work out a different arrangement. But as we mentioned in your packet, alternatively, there are other approaches that we would enter into more of a long-term agreement with the county whereby the land ownership would stay as it currently is. Again, that's sort of the policy direction that we're looking for from the council on which of those avenues to head down.
Councilmember Witt?
Thank you. Ron, unfortunate timing is all. I'm sorry. But I, after listening to, I had a discussion with Harold about this and talking to some other folks, I feel comfortable that, in saying that I would like to make a motion to direct staff to bring forward for council's consideration the property acquisition and conservation easement.
I'll second it. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Yeah, and just hearing you talk, I guess my thoughts are, I mean, yeah, jurisdictionally speaking, would it be easier for the police, fire department, et cetera, to know where they're going? So there could be a safety implication. And I also think if we are going to be doing the River Corridor, if it is in the heart of the city, you know, spend a little bit of money to lock it up, so we don't have to fight with the county over what they're going to do on their land. I mean, it's limited anyway, but it does make sense. So I'd be able to support that, Councilmember Witt.
Okay.
If I can jump in, I think also part of the discussion is, as Mr. Stewart indicated, is that we do have an asset on property that we don't own. And so that was kind of the genesis, I think, of the discussion. So that's what actually initiated the discussion.
All right. Shall we vote on this? Okay, it passes seven to zero. Thank you. So next item.
The next item is Nick Wolfram and his patriot or compatriot, Brad Skoll, going to give you an update on the River Corridor project.
My name is Brad Skoll. I'm the Planning Manager in the Department of Economic Development. And you'll have a couple of people presenting to you this evening. Nick Wolfram and I are going to carry most of the presentation with respect to the planning and the capital improvement aspects of River Corridor flood mitigation. David Hollingsworth is here and who's been managing the consulting engineer with respect to the floodplain analysis. Larry Bueno's here, who's also was in charge of the environmental review and the work that was done that last year on the St. Brain River. Brian Schumacher, ninja of all things, is here this evening. Aaron Fosdick, who you saw at the retreat, also is here, is going to give us a little bit of a view of how we've been developing the GIS tool. So I think we're ready to queue up the, Sarah, the PowerPoint. Well, we'll just go. Well, as you can see, the first slide is the introductory slide to this item. And part of what we want to do this evening is to give you an update on our progress with respect to the work plan. This item has been a 2011 and a 2012 work plan item. And the last time that we spoke to you about this was at the council retreat, although we've been providing updates to the council work plan as we've done the quarterly work. So our review and revisiting the purpose of what the St. Brain River Corridor project is about, we're looking at constructing the improvements for the purposes of mitigating the floodplain problems, leveraging private investment, getting redevelopment, going along there eventually, and creating a destination and amenity for the community that's going to bring redevelopment. We've got a couple of slides here that are titled Project Timeline. And I think what they are, they're a combination of both a timeline and what are some of the moving parts or the components associated with this project. And as the council's familiar, there are two main themes associated with what's going on. And the first, and certainly a very important aspect to this, is the flood impact mitigation. And Nick's going to have some updated information for you with regard to the preliminary work that the consultant has done. Some of the initial cost assessment for what the improvements would be are in the $25 million range. This is an estimate associated with the bridges and some of the channel improvements, as well as land acquisition. Those costs are subject to change as we get further into the project and further into the design. The timeline associated with when we would see some of the first capital construction, design on the bridges in 2013, 14, construction on the bridges, 2015, 16. Because the bridges are going to be a little bit wider span, there'll probably be some property acquisition associated with that near the ends of each bridge. The channel improvements then are going to come along with that. It's presently unfunded, and in a little bit, you'll be able to see what is the extent of the floodway and the recommended cross-section for the channel that's being proposed. And then we believe that with these improvements in place, that we're going to see a great opportunity for redevelopment in this area. We'll see mixed-use opportunities for housing, retail, and other amenities along the River So here we get into the timeline prospect of this a little bit. And Nick and I have had some interesting discussions about what constitutes short-term, midterm, and long-term timeframes. But given some of the funding that's in place now with respect to the design and capital for the bridge construction and some of the capital that could be raised, you know, a 10-year timeframe, we feel is kind of a midterm timeframe in which some of the capital improvements could be accomplished. Now, that's subject to really what type of priority the council wants to put on this. And you'll examine different types of funding opportunities as well that are either more or less aggressive. So it could be speeded up. Maybe it doesn't follow a track that is specifically 10 years from now. Maybe you pick pieces and have a little bit different timeframe. The adjacent redevelopment uses are usually going to come after the infrastructure commitment's been made, and we see some of the movement with respect to the infrastructure construction. It's at that time normally that we see the private property owners starting to understand that there's an opportunity for redevelopment. But certainly, we want to make sure that the planning effort that we undertake is going to be helpful for the property owners envisioning what might be future redevelopment opportunities as well as citizens. So I think we can go to the next slide, Nick. Thank you. I think as the council knows, we have some projects that are underway, and they're related directly to this activity. That's ongoing. In fact, there's a number that you'll see in just a minute. But the first and main redevelopment area is moving forward. Council had the master plan in front of you earlier this year, and we're following through with rezoning toward the end of this year. And we're hoping that we're going to be able to attract some interest in that particular area. The southeast urban renewal area is 500 acres. You'll see in the next slide is the large map that's overlapping this area. The St. Brain Greenway Master Plan, as Dale mentioned earlier, has been ongoing for nearly 20 years and several million dollars' worth of investment. And we're also undertaking the current master planning effort for the parks. And the St. Brain Greenway is in fact a component of the park system. It's a district park within the park system. So there's a look at the southeast urban renewal area in some of the beige. You can see the first and main site. So that's really a demonstration slide to tell you that there's a lot going on. As you look at that slide, the left-hand boundary of that area is the Pratt Street. And then as you go further to the east, you can identify the water treatment facility, Main Street. Nick is showing us, and there's the river down along in there. I think what we'd like to do right now is take just a minute and run through a little bit of some of the work that we've been doing on our GIS application. And Aaron Fosdick is going to show you what's been going on. I guess on the face of things, you don't see a lot of movement and activity down there along the St. Brain Greenway yet. But as the council knows, we've had a number of redevelopment activities or planning activities done by CU students. And there's a great deal of wealth of information, in fact, that we've been able to compile in the GIS database.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, members of council. I'm Aaron Fosdick with the Economic Development Department. I think actually you can hear me if I just sit normal. Is that okay? Okay. So you'll probably recall that at your retreat earlier this year, Lisa and I did a sort of demonstration of this interactive map that we've been working on. I say sort of because it wasn't live. We showed you screenshots. We're actually able to show it to you live tonight. So what I'm going to do is just kind of give you an overview. I don't plan to spend a lot of time on this, but we just wanted to let you know that we have been working on this. And probably even more interestingly, to have been working on this, and probably even more interestingly, talk with you about some of the plans that we have to continue to add functionality and continue to involve, you know, city staff, as well as people outside of the city. So, this is the St. Brain River Corridor interactive map. It's basically an online ArcGIS product. You can see here what's shown is the base map, as well as the study area. The computer's a little bit slow, so just bear with me here while I load this up. So, one of the things that we thought would be interesting was to, for instance, look at CIP projects. I think we talked about this with you at your retreat. So, there's a number of ways in which data can be categorized. We've chosen to look at, you know, a number of different things. So, for projects within the study area, you know, we can categorize them. Are they related to trail connectivity? Are they water quality projects? Are they floodplain projects? What's their funding status? So, you know, for example, if I turn on Funding, that brings up CIP projects that are in the River Corridor. Let me just zoom in here a little bit. So, while it's redrawing, I'll also mention that, you know, Lisa is really the brains behind this map, and she's actually in Hawaii, so that's where she's not here. She's probably having more fun than we are right now, but maybe not. So, you can see the funding here. And if we look at the legends, you'll see the different color of dots represent funding status for CIP projects within the study area. So, green projects are unfunded. We've got tan, partially funded, and then fully funded projects are shown in blue. We can click on any of the projects to get more information. It tells you, you know, this project is a sidewalk connection. It also gives us information on, you know, what other categories we've included that in. So, we can get this type of information for really any of the layers that we have in here, and we're constantly adding to this list. So, we've got a lot of base data that you can see. We've obviously got, you know, hydrology, city limits, streets. But we've also got data that's going to be pertinent to this effort. So, we've got, you know, we've got the floodplain, which you'll see here in blue. And then, we've got all of the data that Brad showed on his previous map as well. So, I'll turn on First and Main, and let me turn off the floodplain so you can see it easier. What's really cool about this map is when you click on the data, you can, you know, pull up a bunch of information. We don't have much here, but what we do have is a link to more information. So, you know, if a member of the public or staff wanted to get more information, you know, what's this First and Main shape that's showing up? Well, we can direct them right here to the website, and they can see, you know, what's going on. You know, one thing that I was thinking that could be interesting to include on this map is, you know, we have the comment during Public Invited to Be Heard. Someone produced a document about water rights. Those types of things could be certainly attached into this if we included it with spatial information. So, really, it's limitless in terms of what we could put in here. You know, as we start including some of these capital projects, we could link to plans for those projects as the design occurs. So, really, it's a great tool to be able to share information. And then, what I'd like to just end with is kind of where we see this going. Lisa's been working on some applications even outside of this where residents and other people in the city can upload information directly to us. So, for instance, as part of our outreach effort with the public, we may say, you know, if you have a really good idea where you'd like to see a specific project, you know, go out to this map and put a point down, and then, you know, give us some information on that. There probably need to be some type of vetting process so that, you know, we didn't end up with crazy things on our map. But it's a really great, real-time way that, you know, I could be out there, and maybe I'm riding my bike along the Greenway, and I say, you know, this is a great place for a public art feature. I could stop, you know, put a point on this map. It goes to us here at the city. We say, "Great, you know, let's add that to our public input layer," and then that shows up on the map, so others can see it, and potentially, it starts a dialogue. So, those are some of the things that we're thinking about moving forward. And I think that, you know, we're just about ready. Lisa's done a great job with what we have. We're adding stuff, you know, pretty much constantly. So, I think we're about ready to put this out online and start letting the public and staff view it. And then, as we move into needing to share data with, you know, potentially consultants, engineering firms, other residents, whoever's interested, this mapping tool is also a really good, efficient way to share data. So, others that have access to ArcGIS online can just download our layer straight from there, which, you know, will save a lot of staff time and headache, make sure everyone's using the correct data. So, that's another great thing.
The second council member, Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have a question. Where you're showing First and Main, that's based on fast tracks potentially coming to that side of town, right?
So, what we're depicting here is essentially the rezoning area, and it's based on the current plan of being located west of Maine.
Okay. So, but it could potentially be flipped to the east side of Maine, right?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Samori. So, if another solution was arrived at, and the station area location changed, you know, certainly, the First and Main plan would likely be updated. And then, whatever new kind of shape was chosen could be easily uploaded into this map to reflect kind of the current reality.
Thank you.
It's also still in the same planning area. So, if you look to the area on the... Trying to get my bearings. I'm still doing this.
Here's Maine.
There's Maine.
Here's First.
So, if you look where the cursor is, and let's assume that it did come in on the north line, can you move the cursor farther to the right? That's...
Here's the rail line right here.
Right there. Back to the right, down. That, then, is in the planning area that we would look at. So, it's still fundamentally in the First and Main planning area. It's just, we would essentially flip the use over under that location.
Councilmember Levison?
Do you have another question, Alice? Okay. Could you go back one slide, please, Aaron?
I don't actually have slides. Let me zoom out here.
Whatever. Just go back to the one where it's kind of the bigger picture. Well, not... That's great. So, how many layers can you put on of the contents of the toolbar and still be able to distinguish? I'm sort of thinking of this as, you know, those Doris Kinsley books where they have the plastic sheets, and it's the human body, so that you keep layering things on and on and on. How many can you layer on? Like, could we look at, you know, floodplain and zoning and projects and districts all at one time? Because I know Southeast Urban Renewal Area actually encompasses First and Main also. You know, I'm just wondering how the colors for the projects will be coming up, too, because they seem like they would get lost in some of the other features.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison. Hang on just a second. I don't want to stop or anything. So, really, I mean, this is... That's kind of a question of cartography. I mean, the great thing about this is it's really user-defined. So, I guess my answer to your question would be, whatever your tolerance for clutter would be, I mean, you could turn on every layer here if you wanted. You know, certainly, there's going to be overlap, so it does tend to get messy if you have an area, you know, right here that's part of the DDA, it's in floodplain, it's part of the Southeast Urban Renewal Area, and the First and Main Station. But the good thing is, is if you do get confused or something, you know, you click on an area, and you see here how it says "One of Four." Well, it shows you, you know, right now, we're looking at First and Main, but if we go over, now, we're looking at the DDA boundary, and you can see the subtle highlight. So, really, it's just determined by the user. You know, and certainly, if you zoom in further, if you're looking at a specific property, you may be able to show more data, whereas if you're out further. But really, it's up to the user.
I think the way the tool is set up, it's going to be... I think having the ability to have multiple layers like this will give people the idea of how you drill down into the various projects that are overlapping and the different aspects of... And actually, complexity of some of this work here.
And the other thing that we're able to do is actually kind of predefine things so that if someone comes in at a rather small scale, meaning they're seeing the entire city, then certain data doesn't have to show up. You know, if I zoom in really far, you'll see that, you know, for instance, building outlines begin to show up. That's not something that we need to see when we're zoomed out. So, we can control some of that and help with that user experience a little bit.
So, if I can jump in real quick, I think the simple answer is, this is an Esri... They're using Esri in this. And so, I've layered in the past multiple layers, seven, eight, and then we've had to adjust colors depending on what we were looking at. I think, as we talk about this, one of the points that we're trying to show is, this is going to be a critical tool for us as we continue moving forward in this discussion when we start looking at the overlapping concepts, and then we start keeping track of capital projects. And I think it's going to be a critical tool for me when we start looking at what can we do in terms of consolidation of projects. It's also something that, when you take this out to the level, and then you start designing very specific plans, and you're trying to deal with floodplain mitigation, and then development processes and zoning, it's where we start building the overall concept for this project, and it becomes the central area that we can utilize as staff, the council can utilize, and that the community can utilize in terms of how we're progressing through this discussion. So, you can create a different layer for that, showing the evolution of the project and what we're doing. And then, fundamentally, with whomever we have work on this project, this is all data that they're going to need. And so, I think, just a quick overview, that's why we're showing you this in terms of, this is the early stages, but as we continue moving through this project, you're going to see more information, and we'll show you the evolution of it.
Thank you, Aaron. One more slide, and I'm going to turn it over to Nick, but I wanted to cover that a little bit of what we're doing in terms of stakeholders and contacting property owners. And so, we're fortunate tonight to have Kim and Sue here, and they've actually been looking for the property owner for 131 Maine because it's been in our transaction. So, when Ray Bergio came down and introduced himself tonight, we have an opportunity to make another connection, and I see another couple of property owners have come in. So, we're thankful to have Mr. Redmond and Mr. Hansard here this evening as well. So, there are about a dozen property owners that are directly affected, that we're engaged with right now, that we think are going to be involved with us with respect to the capital improvements associated with flood mitigation. So, this is the first step of engaging those property owners, as well as the council, but talking to them about what we think are going to be some of the specific solutions and what are the constraints and opportunities associated with the work that'll be done down there. So, we do have another meeting scheduled tomorrow with Golden Moving Storage. And now that we know where Mr. Bergio is at, we can run down and follow up with him. So, this is going to be an ongoing process with the property owners, to stay engaged with them as we keep developing and refining concepts with respect to the capital improvement side of things. That'll be our work product or process. So, I think... Nick, would you like me to run the... Or you just want to go from there?
I'll just stay here, if that's all right.
Samori, you'd like to ask something?
If you go back to that previous slide, as you were discussing that slide in the open house, I was noticing people in the audience shaking their head that they weren't aware that that occurred on Wednesday.
We contacted all of the property owners that are directly adjacent to the corridor between Maine and Francis Street, basically. And so, hearing from Kim and Sue tonight is putting them on the list also to make sure that they're engaged with it also, and anybody else that, as a property owner that has a direct stake in the capital work, we want to include them as well.
Okay. Because one of the things at lunch today, also, one other property owner that owns property where the mobile homes are, had some concern because they had the same senior water rights, and they were concerned about access to the water when and if redevelopment was going. So, if you'd keep that in mind, too.
Councilmember Levison?
And I'm just concerned, this is the second time that this has happened in the past couple of months where residents who are affected by things that the city is doing, they haven't been contacted. And I know that, for instance, Hayes Automotive, which is right next to the path by the bridge that goes over, he had no idea about this either. So, if we could get a better list of... And if we don't have a list, then we need to go out and knock on doors, because this really does affect people's livelihoods, et cetera. So, I just wish it hadn't happened a second time. That's all.
Okay. Continue.
Yeah. Mayor and councilmembers, this is going to be a long-term project on this, and it's our intention to make sure that we catch every property owner. And not every property owner and business owner are necessarily the same. So, there's sort of a layer of stakeholders. We're trying to start with the people who have the actual investment in the property. There are going to be tenants that we're going to need to be working and contacting as well. So, that'll be part of the legwork that we do, certainly.
Councilmember Tagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess my question is maybe one for you, Gene, Mr. May. I... Or one of you guys, I don't know. But so, I guess what I'd like to know is, as we're proceeding with the River Corridor, I would like to know the folks who are concerned about their property rights. What's the process? Is... I mean, I know there's a public meeting, and they're informed, but legally, how are they made whole? What's... I mean, what's... I mean, if I was a property owner, I'd be kind of worried about just what the process is. Will I be compensated? Will I be, you know, thrown to the wolves? What is... I guess I'd like to hear in layman's terms, just in a nutshell, and moving forward, what's going to happen as we start acquiring property, making sure the River Corridor is first and foremost flood mitigation? What's the process? How's that work?
I'll take a shot at it. All right, Nick. Nick Wolfram, with the Engineering Services Manager. As Brad said, there's a lot of kind of different layers of that. And the first people that we contacted were people who were right adjacent to the project where we would probably be... anticipate having to acquire some property, where there would be direct property impact to them. And that was the first list of people that we did.
So, what I'm saying is, so, we don't just take it? We compensate them for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Certainly. When we do that, we look through the process and negotiate with people to try and acquire that. And we'll talk about that a little later as I go through the numbers of properties that we would anticipate. And that's going to be a significant issue in this, and probably one of the most complicated parts of it that impacts people the most directly, in my opinion.
Okay. So, even though there's probably some understandable angst and worry, we're going to work with them and make sure that everybody's opinion is taken into account, compensation is made, and that concerns are resolved. That's what I'm hearing?
Yes.
All right. Cool. I just wanted to hear you say that. Thanks.
And so, once again, Nick Wolfram with the Engineering Services Division from Public Works and Natural Resources. In 2010, staff completed an update look of the St. Brain floodplain. And we did that for several reasons. One, just to update the 1995 FEMA regulatory mapping, which was getting older and was based on older technology. We... One of the major reasons we were looking at that is because of the First and Main planning that was being done at the time, and needing to look at that site and determine how with the redevelopment of that site would we be able to deal with the floodplain. We also needed to have that background information as far as the understanding of those flows through there as we began to look at designs of a couple of bridges, the Main Street Bridge and the South Prep Parkway Bridge that were in our CIP. So, in 2010, we presented that to council and also to the public and did some... And follow-up in 2011, some floodplain preparedness, emergency preparedness, public meetings up and down the corridor with our public safety staff. When council then looked at the 2012 work plan, we took this conceptual level of design and said, "Let's take a closer look at that in this core of downtown," basically the area between Main Street and the BNSF Railroad. And it goes a little bit down of Main Street and a little bit upstream of BNSF Railroad. And to take the first step on that was to take that level from conceptual design to a little bit more of a preliminary design so that we'd have a better... of a preliminary design so that we'd have a better idea of both the concept of what could be done, what was possible there for floodplain mitigation, and what some of the costs and ramifications on that. So that was to be done by the end of September and we got that, that initial phase of that work done. And that's what we're going to start stepping through this evening. This is the 1894 flood there at First and Main looking south. You see a very broad floodplain that transverses through the city. And so as we start here, we're going to, we're going to go through and look at some of that. And I want to draw your attention first of all to the upper right-hand corner of this and the letters "draft" up there. This is, this is, this is a draft look at this. This is very preliminary. This is based on aerial photography. We've identified that work. It's that next layer step on that. But it is just an initial look at how, at what options are available. We felt like when we, when we start going to the public and the property owners, it helps to have something that you can say, this is a start option. We can look at that and tweak this and make changes in this as we move forward with that. But as we look at the improvements that we would do, here is Main Street, here's South Pratt Parkway. This is the Pavlocas Open Space Property that the city owns and planning is going on right now for development of a district park in that. Starting on this downstream side, and we need to start on the downstream side because you've got to have the capacity on the downstream side to flow those things through. If we do upstream improvements but still have those bottlenecks downstream, we're not accomplishing anything. So we would start, there is some grading that would have to be done downstream of the Main Street Bridge and we'd look at doing that in conjunction with the development of that park. The Main Street Bridge is right here, is currently about 150-foot span. When you look at Martin Street and Ken Pratt Boulevard downstream, you notice the difference. This, this bridge would need to be replaced with about a 270-foot span bridge. So it's a significant increase in that in order to pass that, those storm flows. That project is funded in our current CIP that council's been reviewing and acting on, in conjunction with a project that would also be replacing pavement on Main Street from Ken Pratt Boulevard up to Third Avenue that we got Dr. Kog funding for. But that bridge replacement is funded. I think as Brad stated, we'll be starting design work on that probably next year, 2013. We've got 2013 and 14 to do a lot of that design work, permitting, right-of-way acquisition if we need to acquire some through there. And then construction in 2015 and 16. Continuing upstream in that section between Main and South Pratt, we talked about at council retreat, the fact that you not only have to deal with the structures, but you've got to widen the channel. We've got a capacity of about 5,000 CFS and the floodplain's 10,000. So it ends up with that very wide floodplain that we'll look at. And so in this area and through here, we talked in your, in your communication about developing, widening a low terrace to confine that floodplain. We're looking at that along the north side. Primary reason for that is with the city-owning property east of Main Street here. It makes the most sense in our mind to extend the bridge to the north, taking advantage of that city-owned property rather than coming down into here. So we need to stay on that side going to this, this direction over through here. And when I talk about that lower terrace, a picture's probably worth a lot of words anyway. This is, this is Main Street and you can see we've still got the low St. Brain River Channel there. And this kind of low terrace at this point in time is only about 15 feet wide. It's just a little wider than the width of the St. Brain Greenway, or of the, the actual sidewalk and trail right there. This, on the other hand, is down by the Martin Street Bridge and you can see, we're not talking about widening the whole bottom of the river, but the bottom of the river is down here, but here we have that widened terrace area, about another 100 feet, 150 feet in width, that gives us the opportunity to increase that, increase that bench there and carry that high-flow capacities in a storm event. So that gives you an idea of what that would look like. Continuing upstream, South Pratt Parkway right here, the BNSF Railroad's here. The South Pratt Parkway Bridge would need to be replaced. That's a funded project in your CIP that's funded for construction in 2016. After we get Main Street finished, we'll slide over and start working on that. Once again, that's another bridge that's about 150-foot span currently and would need to be widened out to about 260 to 270 feet to carry those flows.
Hey Nick, can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
To kind of bring this back around a little bit, and why are we talking about this in terms of the river development project? I think we have to really make the point that really looking at the floodplain in addressing the potential flooding issues is really the foundation for this project. Because as you move through, through and you start looking at potential commercial uses or development opportunities or private investment, the floodplain directly impacts those opportunities. And so it's, it's really how do you manage the floodplain to, to then allow you to have options to undertake other activities. And so part of this is actually a reduction of the floodplain. And I think you're going to get to that.
Real quick.
Real quick in the presentation, but I wanted to make that connection in terms of why are we having this discussion? And to give you a sense of this, when I went through a similar project, while it wasn't widening a river, it was actually dredging a river to increase capacity so we can manage those issues in terms of that next step. So this is really the foundation for where we need, for future discussions on this project.
And I'll pick up the pace and move that along. The one difference here, once again, in this area, you've got widening. We've shown along through here, and when we heard at council retreat, from council, was that you wanted to maintain primarily a greenway sort of area. I remember showing a picture of the Cherry Creek one and saying, no, we don't want that. But at the same time, we acknowledge the fact that retaining walls might be necessary in specific locations. And that's what we've shown in green in some areas along through here. These are retaining walls that vary anywhere from only two feet high up to 12. Those could be stepped back. It doesn't have to be that high concrete wall. In this area, partly it's to maintain the limits of where you're going. If we go any farther this way, we're into the roadway, and that's what provides access for all these properties up through here. Part of the other reason for these walls in this area is to maintain the river in this oxbow so that it doesn't try and move laterally, that we try and maintain it where it is. Upstream from here, the South Pratt, or the BNSF Railroad Bridge, once again, that is not ours. That is privately owned structure of BNSF. We've contacted them and are trying to get a meeting set up next month or the following month when they get to town for a meeting to talk about this. But that is one of the biggest bottlenecks on the, on the river right now. It's one of the smallest bridges there. And then upstream from the BNSF Bridge, in order to get the water into the channel to get it underneath that, you have to continue those channel improvements up a little ways towards Boston, which is right up here with another widening of that bench area to get that capacity there. And then, as Harold said, coming back down Main Street, Martin Street right in through here, you can see the difference in what this would do. The orange lines right up here are the existing floodplain. It goes all the way up towards First Avenue, which is right up here. This is the Pratt-Terry Overpass, Ken Pratt Boulevard. It comes all the way down towards Ken Pratt in some areas. The blue lines are basically the limits of those new, of that new benched area, that widened area. And that is what would become the new floodplain as you moved through there. Moving upstream here, here's the BNSF Railroad right here, South Pratt Parkway. You can see, once again, this area would come out of the floodplain. This area down in through here remains in the floodplain because those flows are already out of bank upstream. They're topping Hova Road. And one of the reasons we're widening on the south side here rather than on the north side is because those flows are coming this direction. So if we widen on the north side, it's still going to be in the floodplain. But catching those flows there prevents those flows from going on up underneath the Pratt-Terry Overpass and coming back down. And what does that accomplish? Excuse me. About 200 acres out of the floodplain in lower downtown. Improved safety, obviously, in case of a major storm event. Roadways clear during floods. The, right now, Main Street, South Pratt Parkway are overtopped during a major storm event, not to mention all the local access streets. And as been mentioned earlier, it removes a major hindrance to redevelopment in that area. You can see the green buildings or buildings in there that would be removed from the floodplain. The black buildings are buildings that would still be in the floodplain. The red buildings are properties that would be impacted. We would have to acquire or work with. Project impacts, as Brad said, estimated cost about $25.3 million. Of that, about $18.5 million is unfunded. The difference in that is the funding that we currently have in the CIP through the street fund for the bridges at Main Street and South Pratt Parkway. That next bullet is a little different than the information. I apologize, that was in your communication. The acquisition of approximately 18 and a half acres. I believe I said 14-something in your communication. This is some better information and also a little bit of a math error on my part. The acquisition of properties, we've identified 80 buildings roughly, and your communication it said 123. Part of the difference in that is because the, when they looked at that, they were just pulling things up. So for example, in the mobile home parks, they were counting the, an outbuilding separately. It's more realistic to say you're talking about about 80 properties in through there and not duplicating up multiple buildings a shed or a garage in addition to a mobile home on that. So some very significant impacts to a lot of people in that. Oh, I totally skipped down somewhere. Project acquisition and relocation costs could vary significantly. I would say of that $25.3 million, I'm more confident in some of the engineering issues related to estimated costs for structures and dirtwork. Some of that will depend on as we work with properties, are we buying only a portion of that property, only the portion that we need, or is that going to result in a total taking of that property depending on working through negotiations with them? So that, that's an area that we need to look at further. Relocation, there will be businesses and homes that are, residences that are going to be relocated. So that's probably where a lot of this, obviously the emotion and some of the major concern will come in. How to fund public capital improvements? I address this briefly in the communication. The Storm Drainage Fund, the monthly utility billing, we're completing right now an update to our Storm Drainage Master Plan and that will lead towards early next year. We're going to be looking at a rate analysis. We've discussed that as we've talked about budget before, the fact that that fund is hurting financially. We're going to be looking at a rate analysis. We will look at these costs as a portion of that. That would have a very significant impact if all of those costs were placed onto that rate. But that is a piece that we'll look at and we'll be coming back to you, at least in the first half of next year, with that rate analysis. And we can look more at some of these funding options in conjunction with that. A River Corridor sales tax, we mentioned briefly in there, what a tenth of a cent of sales tax would do versus being able to pay for bonding for that unfunded amount. Grants. Council's aware that on Left Hand Creek Project, we got $3 million grant from FEMA. We would certainly be looking at for that sort of opportunity again. We cannot reapply for one of those. David got the last one for us and we can't reapply until 2014, I believe. We'd have to look at how we would be able to package that in and make that an attractive grant opportunity for them. Special districts. You looked at that pro, we got 200 acres that's coming out of the floodplain. There are a lot of properties that are not the ones adjacent to the river that benefit from this, an opportunity there. We also met with, last week, we met with the National Development Council, representatives from the NDC. That's the oldest nonprofit community economic development organization in the US and they work with communities to develop funding opportunities for community development. We discussed this with, with them. We didn't see any immediate things that jumped out, but we're going to continue to talk to them, particularly as it relates to some of those relocation costs might be some. They didn't see any immediate things that they could think of as it related to our, the infrastructure cost, but that was just the first conversation with them. I would also say that, like most large projects of this nature, I would assume that likely the funding for something like this would come from a variety of different sources. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Brad unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Councilmember Rosen.
Thank you, Mayor. Have you looked at, knowing that most of this area is also influenced with the Southeast Urban Renewal Area, have we looked at the option of utilizing TIF? Because it's kind of, this is kind of the no-brainer situation for TIF, that the minute those properties come out of the floodplain, their property values just go up. I mean, you're removing something, it's actually what TIF was originally supposed to do, remove something that's such an impediment that, you know, it's a danger to the property, depresses the value. So have we looked at any kind of planning with a very targeted, you know, TIF as part of the funding options?
We haven't gotten into the details of that, but once again, as we talked about districts, that, to me, that would be certainly an option. And a large portion of this area is already in that Southeast Urban Renewal Area. So that's one of, certainly one of the options that we would look at. We just got the costs in a couple of weeks ago. So now that we have that, we can begin to have a better understanding of what kind of money we're looking at.
And I think my preference would be not to create a special district, but just to pull the TIF trigger, primarily because every time when you have a special district, you have to have every property owner with a vote. And on a big capital project of this scale and size that really has major community impact, the, the council, being the urban renewal authority, has that 30,000-foot view and the fiduciary responsibility to, you know, eradicate the public safety aspect of this floodplain challenge here too. So, plus if there, the complexity of the property acquisition is something only, you know, the elected body, I think, could really deal with effectively. So I'd prefer not to look at the special district model just because I think it, it can become, it could become terribly problematic.
So I think part of the discussion is when Nick talked about, the, the impact is actually broader than the existing area. And so it's how do you look at that impact and how do you account for it in terms of the funding mechanism? And so that is part of the discussion that we've been having. Brad and I have also had discussions about the ability of some of that area in terms of generation of revenue, specifically on the sales tax side. And then as you move further to the east, it looks like it's going to have more of a residential character to it. And so that could impact some of the revenue streams as well. So we are having those discussions. I think it's just as we continue moving through the process, really seeing what does it need to look like, you know? Does it need to be expanded? If it, if it does, how far do we go? And that's where we're moving.
Okay, continue. Thank you, Mayor. The next part of the presentation is talking a little bit about what the planning initiative is going to look like. And talk to the council about how we want to scale the, the planning effort to be consistent with the engineering work that we're doing. And then talk about some of the funding options for that. Breaking down what the planning work is going to be, you know, we're looking at it in kind of three distinct activities. There's going to be the work that is done within the floodplain channel itself that Nick showed you. And some of the work that's going to be done in that area, we want to match up an urban design consultant to create an attractive environment within the flood channel itself. Take a look at some of the amenities that can be constructed in conjunction with the capital improvements. There may be opportunities for public art in conjunction with some of the retaining structures. There might be some architectural opportunities within the bridges. I think we're talking about placemaking within the, within St. Brain Greenway Corridor. So as adjacent uses to the Greenway Corridor develop, you already have a magnet that's going to be attracting people down there. Another phase of the planning is going to be trying to make sure that you position the public improvements in the channel such that you can have easy access from the River Corridor to the adjacent properties. And, well, Nick was showing you some pretty broad floodplain areas that were down east of Main Street as we get down into the core area or this urban segment. Even though the flood channel may be 200 or 300 feet in width, that's still going to be bumping up against some of the adjacent land uses. be bumping up against some of the adjacent land uses, and there may be some vertical disconnect between what will be the flood channel and what is going to be the out-of-the-floodplain location for the redevelopment opportunities. So, we'll be looking for connections between the Greenway Trail and how you get out of it and get up into the adjacent property. And then, lastly, it'll be appropriate to analyze the adjacent land uses next to the river corridor. I think this is what we've been all talking about. What are the redevelopment opportunities? What are going to be the best catalyst opportunities, the location? Some of this work is going to really be dependent upon, as Harold described, the necessary capital improvements planning that we do to start with. Some of the hard edges associated with where the floodway boundaries will be and where the, those improvements stop and where the property that's out of the floodplain, that will be private sector property for redevelopment begins. We're going to have to be rethinking the location of some of the infrastructure Nick mentioned, that we have to look out for any kind of street access. Really, a lot of the opportunity, for example, between the St. Brain River up to Boston Avenue, we're going to be needing to look at the depth of those lots and what the location of the infrastructure is and access for those properties as we look for them to be redevelopment Just real quick, to thank everybody who showed up and gave you some input at Rhythm on the River. And these are the top 10 choices. There was a, a copy of all of the visual pictures that were at the Rhythm on the River board that people got a chance to take a look and vote on with stickies, and these were the top choices. Many of these are consistent with what we heard at the retreat. One of the things that I think that we're hearing is the experience within the Greenway itself is what people are really interested in. They already love it. They think it's a great idea, so a lot of this is building on top of what's already out there. So, we'll continue the public outreach as we go through the planning process. So, now, we're going to get to maybe the heart of the matter a little bit and talk about how we're going to try and sync up the two efforts. At the 2012 retreat this year in April, you saw a presentation by DSW, and they showed some pretty highly refined graphics, so Estes Park, Bublo, some other locations where some planning and some actual implementation has been done. So, I think that's an eventual product of where we want to get to. There are probably some necessary steps to accomplish before we do that. As I mentioned before, I think we're at that stage right now, and the work plan talks about syncing up the river corridor consultant with the, with an urban design consultant so we can start the capital improvement design so it's going to reflect both function for the purposes of flood mitigation, but it's also going to contribute to the aesthetic of the Greenway corridor. We already have a planning consultant underway who's doing the Parks master plan right now. We have consulted with them and asked them to give us a quote and the proposal in terms of what we're talking about with respect to river corridor planning. Let me tell you that the consultant is MIG, and I think they're doing a pretty good job on the Parks master planning. It's a multi-discipline consulting firm, and they have done river corridor planning and urban design in other areas. If, in fact, we found an economy that was appropriate based on an existing contract that we have and some of the groundwork that they've already done in Longmont in developing the public engagement process and some of the intercepts that they've had with community engagement with respect to the Greenway, because it is part of the district park process, we may experience a monetary savings by using that consultant. They've given us a quote. It's around about $160,000, $160,170. Spent some time on the phone with them today, talking about what's more, what's less that could go in that kind of study. One of the things that Aaron was talking about earlier is this wealth of information that we have in the GIS database. That's the kind of stuff that we can hand over to the consultant, and it's less research work that they do, and they've already done a considerable amount of research work already.
So, let me jump in real quick, Brad. So, the question is why, so what we've been talking about has not been very sexy in terms of the project. It's a necessary component of the project. Now, we're bringing the two together, and so why the urban design when we're designing the bridge? Because what you don't want to do is build a bridge that specifically just functions as a bridge and doesn't bring other elements into it when you know you're going to potentially look at something down the road, because then what you find is that you get yourself in a position where you're redoing the bridge to match what you're trying to do. So, there's going to be a form, and then there's a function of this, and that's where we're trying to bring this together. So, we're being good stewards of the public funds as we, as we move through the process, because we don't want to have to go back and then redo something that we created a few years prior to that. So, that's part of the discussion, and that's where we're going to start needing the policy direction from council as we continue moving forward.
Councilmember Levin?
Yes. The consultant that the city hired to do the First and Main Transit Area, Steer Davies, you know, they, they have the same kind of background as far as multidisciplinary, and also they, because of First and Main, they actually looked at the influence of river corridor as part of the First and Main planning area, yet that was not part of their scope of work, so they could not go any further. My suggestion is that, you know, we do some kind of an RFP process and maybe to have MIG do the master, the park stuff, and then have Steer Davies do the other urban level stuff would be relevant. Frankly, they put together an amazing team, and their communications team was excellent, who they had, the subcontractors they brought in, and they had outstanding, as far as streamlined work ethic, very, very efficient on time. I mean, some of the most efficient that I've seen. And I was able to review their proposals twice, all those proposals for First and Main. So, since we've worked with them well before, I think we need to at least give them a crack at it as well.
Mayor Coombs, and council, we can certainly do that. I think we're, we're looking at different options.
Councilmember Whit?
It seems to me that you have an idea of how we could best, most efficiently utilize what we already have in the works right now, and I'm going to somewhat disagree with Councilmember Levin, and I don't think we need to be making that decision right now, and I, I'll wait for more information.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, and I would tend to agree. If you're going to go for an RFP and already have someone picked out, that's not how an RFP works. So, if we have somebody already that's working with us, why move, why shift? So, I would disagree with Councilmember Levin's assessment as well. Perhaps later on down the line, we do an actual RFP, and that group actually wins it instead of having already designated, this is the person that I want to have win. That's not how an RFP process works.
Councilmember Levin?
Mayor, my suggestion really was not that we just pick two people, although we could just narrow the scope of the RFP, that we only want to look at a couple and extend it to them. I just think that, you know, for the same reasons staff is suggesting, MIG, I'm actually surprised staff did not suggest Steer Davies, because, you know, they've worked with the city over a long term. Plus, they've already done some of the mapping. They've done the economic analysis for the properties. You know, we can, we can look at making a choice between doing, you know, a full RFP. I was just suggesting that we do have other consultants who have basically just in June gone off contract with us, frankly.
Mayor, councilmembers, I think this is a good discussion. It's where we're taking you to on the next slide, Nick. But as we move into that next slide, we haven't budgeted in either 2012 or 2013 for this project, although we know it's a priority project because it's on the council's work plan. The First and Main consultant is no longer under contract with the city, and as the council knows, we do have some procurement requirements associated with our hiring of outside consultants. MIG is currently under contract. We've spoken to them. We think that, well, we know that within the purchasing requirements of the city, if we have a contractor who's doing existing work qualified in the same area, we have an opportunity to do a contract amendment without going through a lengthy RFP process. And in this particular instance, when their preliminary quote comes in at about $160, I'm pretty encouraged by the economy that they're, that they're proposed to present to us, and we've also talked to them about how we can maybe adjust the cost on that. So, it's really, we're trying to look at quality in terms of what would be a consultant, the time of the importance, and then also the cost-benefit savings that we'd have, so...
So, this is really one of the first policy questions that we're bringing to you all, is that we have MIG under contract. Our purchasing rules allow us to utilize them because we have them under contract. So, that is one perspective we can take, or we can go out and do the RFP for others. It's, and that's the first question we're bringing to you all, is, you know, what do you want to see in terms of an approach, and what is council's thoughts on?
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I think it makes a lot of sense to have MIG do this. It will save us time and money. Both of those things are important to me, and so I would be in favor of having them continue and do that as well.
Councilmember Somari? Councilmember Levin?
Thank you, Mayor. So, when we sent out the RFP for this, though, were we, do you, I mean, if we would have thrown this other piece in, would we have gotten, would we have gotten other people And so, we hired a consultant for one purpose. They have some expertise in this other area, and would you just automatically say, well, you know, frightening right now, we have a luxury of time because we don't have it budgeted. We have to figure out where things are going, and there are some other aspects that need to drop in with MIG doing the work they are now. And then, if we're looking at phasing, then it might make sense to do the RFP process because we do have some time luxury here. We don't have a funding stream yet, and it might, the RFP process, frankly, can answer some of those questions for you, because you get ideas from the applicants that, of different approaches, which I don't think with just keeping MIG to do the work you would get. And that, to me, is a very important thing. The people bidding on the project will actually maybe give you some freebies in what their, what their, their RFP narratives look like, and I think we would miss an opportunity, perhaps, if we just stuck with MIG.
Councilmember Somari?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Guess what I'm hearing is, MIG has been doing a good job so far. We're satisfied with them. They have the capacity and the ability to help us with the other project, and their pricing is in line, and we can do it effortlessly based on our existing purchasing regulations. To me, it sounds like a no-brainer, we move forward with them.
Councilmember Whit?
It sounds as if Councilmember Levin, you have a, you've had a very good experience with this other group, and you're coming up with reasons why we should use them again. And it's, so, although I, I respect your opinion, it seems like our staff who deal with this on a day-to-day basis have come up with a very good reasoning for why we should very strongly consider this. And so, it just seems to me that we have a, you have a favorite business and, and that's, and you're trying to champion for them, but really, it doesn't make sense. It really doesn't, so...
Actually, they weren't the favorite business. I'm just mentioning them as an example of a contractor that we have just finished the contract with. My suggestion to do the RFP, having sat on two RFP committees and reviewed things, what I see in that process that's very valuable is that when, when companies come, you find out other things that your staff might have missed in the approach to the projects and the other parts of the team of subcontractors that the main contractor or consultant will bring in. You get a level of difference in perspectives, and frankly, you know, to make the assumption that, you know, the $165 is the best price, you know, it's our best guess at this point, and I respect the guess of, the guess of the staff, but what we saw in the last RFP process, First and Main, is that there were a lot of companies very hungry and eager to do top-level work for not much money. And so, my suggestion with the RFP process is, you know, we do have time, and the people that we pick that might have this in their repertoire, but they're not an expert in it, we might still get a better-quality work product by, you know, let everybody compete for it. If MIG still comes up on top, then we've got a great confirmation. If, I mean, frankly, Councilmember Whit, Steer Davies may not even apply, and there were tons of great applications. There were, I think, 12 altogether, and we had three finalists that we interviewed. So, there's a wealth of talent out there locally, and, and Longmont attracted quite a bit of attention from the planning consultants for some of the work that we've done recently. So, you know, there, there are some good reasons on the other side, and I understand with, you know, giving a nod to staff here, but I think there are some benefits to the, to the RFP process.
Okay, go ahead. Harold?
Can I just?
Okay, Katie.
Based on the conversation, I would like to direct staff to, how to phrase this? Go forward with MIG.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, I guess my thought is that, as I listen to the presentation, in general, staff is moving in the right direction, and I don't, I don't think we should start micromanaging. Nobody here is a water expert. Nobody here is an RFP, I mean, maybe RFP expert. You've sat on the RFP boards. I haven't. But I guess the point is that city staff seems to be going along in the right direction. My, my suggestion is just keep going. You know, they got the vision right. They got the plan right. Seems like they're looking how to pay for it. They're getting along with MIG. They decide to change MIG. They can decide. I mean, I just, it just seems like I, I don't think there's anything to discuss. So, I mean, whether we vote on something or not, my general recommendation is I think we should just tell them to keep going in the direction they're going. They seem to be handling it okay.
I guess I kind of agree with Brian, and this is, you know, kind of a preliminary study. I'm sure over the 20-year lifetime of this thing, we'll probably do RFPs for other design parts of this. I mean, this is just the getting started initial study of how to approach this problem. So, it's not that we're stuck with this one designer for the life of this program or...
So, there are a number of things that come into this discussion. So, right now, we have a, an engineering group that's involved in this, in this area. We know we have MIG involved in this from other standpoints in certain, in terms of the trail connections, and so then herein then starts the question. Pro of going out in, in terms of an RFP is that you do get different folks looking at it and different ideas, but now you're adding the third group into the mix, and so that can convolute discussions. Pro of staying with MIG is that you, you have consistency in terms of, of the discussion and, and just the streamlined approach. So... So there are different aspects to this, and Sandy can talk in more detail. And, and that's really what we're talking about is how many different groups do we want to have engaged in this discussion? Is it better to have two versus three that we're trying to communicate with and tie these processes together? Because I mean, it fundamentally is a tie-in into these components. And so Sandy, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to mention is that the purchasing process is there in order to create, in some cases, what's going to be the best value, what's going to be the best bang for the buck, to be able to provide that kind of competition. When Nick and Brad and I spoke kind of at the beginning of bidding the Parks Master Plan out, we, there was a decision that we were going to bid them out separately because they seemed like very different skill sets. What then came back and was the successful bidder in MIG that actually showed that they had all of this other set of skills. And so the intention was not necessarily to bid it out together, but to do it separately. And when it came back as a qualified vendor, then that's where the conversations came in around. What's the, what is the overall value to the city? And that's really what, what we look at in this process.
Okay, I guess we have a motion in a second. So it should be...
Just, just on MIG, that's what we're voting on?
Yeah. Okay, we got 6-4, and Councilmember Levison descending.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I might also like to move that we just give general direction to staff that continue in the direction they're heading in the event that they need to change MIG, request an RFP, or suggest another consultant, that they come back to council and we consider such.
I'll second it. All right, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Okay, Mayor, it's time to kick it in gear and get moving a little faster here. Just to let you know that we have one more slide up there that was going to talk to you about some of the places that we're, we're looking for some of the money. And so, I think we need to go, there we go. We're taking a look at some of the undesignated fund balance, contingency money for 2012 and 2013. Open space funds, because this is a district park, are also eligible. So these are the areas that we're suggesting that we, we take a little further look into doing the funding. And based on your direction, I think we can work with MIG and bring you a proposal back that looks at some of these and then gives you an opportunity to give us a little finer direction on the funding.
Councilmember Santos?
I'll, I'll let Harold go ahead.
So we're all obviously going to look in multiple areas as we continue doing this for funding. This was, as we were talking about it and saying, what do we know is available? This is what we know is available. But we also know that we're going to have to look in, in other locations as well.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone targets the council contingency fund. And, you know, everyone targets the council contingency fund. As I said during the budget, we're going to have every not-for-profit in here asking for council, the leftover remains of the council contingency fund. That is, you know, heaven forbid we have a heavy snow and we don't have enough money to, to get that done. I'd like, you know, if there's other, if there are these other options, use those options first before we hit the council contingency fund, because I'd like to see some of that contingency fund roll over into the 2013 budget and perhaps the remainder of it roll into the rainy day fund, as it's called. But, you know, let's keep that council contingency fund as whole as possible until the end of the year.
Councilmember Whit.
I was just going to say, on the other hand, if you just say, hey, you know what? That council contingency fund is going to go towards our project, then nobody will come and beg for it. So there's that.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. Going along with what Councilmember Santos said, when we're looking at that first line, it's the, oh, I meant the second line is that 2012 council general fund contingency is that, and then 13. So those two figures together won't even get us to the 165, even if we wipe both accounts out, right? Am I, I'm adding it up? So the target's 165.
Mayor and council, that's right. And I think what we're trying to do is give you a menu of options. And, and just to tell you that we didn't come up with this on our own, we did consult with Sandy and Teresa about where are some of the funding options. We're going to continue to look for some of those. We've talked to the Greenway Foundation. We're looking where there might be planning grant funds. That lengthens the term on this a little bit in terms of getting it started, but I think we understand that this is an unbudgeted item, but you'd like us to be creative and come back with some answers.
Well, I, I don't really want to use any council contingency funds, you know, in massive amounts. I mean, you know, maybe throwing as a compromise to throw $10,000 from this year and $10,000 from next year to be maybe the, the short-term gap. You know, but again, I've seen us use the council contingency funds one year for winter, emergency winter housing needs, and we did that in late December, and that was one of the worst winters we had. And, you know, thank goodness that we did it. We didn't know how bad that winter was going to be, but we actually probably saved somebody's life because they were out there, not out there in that terrible weather. So, you know, if we happen to have a bad mosquito season next year, we'll have a little extra money for mitigation. You know, we just have to have that, that little bit of, of backup for against contingencies that are unknown at this time. So I wouldn't ever, I wouldn't at this point advocate to use more than $10,000 from this year or the 2013.
Councilmember Santos?
I can't believe we're already talking about spring 2013 contingency fund. We're not even through 2012 yet, folks. Next year, council contingency fund is around $60,000. This year, right now, we have roughly 73,519. So we're going to start spending money out of the 2013 contingency fund? Again, here we go, talking about, talking about the budget, which we haven't even passed yet for 2013, and we're already spending money. Doesn't make any sense yet.
Councilmember Whit.
I think we're getting into the weeds. Let's move on.
Councilmember Santos?
It's not getting into the weeds. These are the, the funding options, and we have $100,000, $130,000 of potential council contingency fund that is being used, all of 2013, all of 2012, and we're not even in, out of 2012 yet, or 13. I think it's a great idea to go after some, more of the grants, and I think that's probably the way, the way we should at least go from there. In the end, if we have some council contingency fund at the end of 2012, okay. You know, the, the $10,000 number, you know, is just the number that got thrown out there. Where's, again, before we start spending council contingency fund, let's see what these, what, what staff can, can come up with as far as other funding options other than the council contingency fund. It seems, and I'm sorry, that it always, it always comes down that the council contingency fund is seen as the credit card. You know, we did this with Rhythm on the River, and again, I'm not trying to get into the weeds here, but I understand the funding options here, go out and try to get more grants. If there's private investment, you know, the member of the public that's been here advocating for the river corridor, where's that, are they bringing money to disable? What are the other options here besides council contingency fund?
We definitely hear that, and we can bring back other options as we're moving through the process.
Thank you, Harold. Councilmember Whit.
And all, all I'm saying is, we're going to have this discussion later, right? So let's not discuss it now because we're going to discuss it later. They're going to come back with proposals, so that's, that's what I meant. And I'm so sorry that I, I indicated that let's raid council contingency. I totally take that back. Let's not talk about that anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council. I think we have some direction. We've got some other information that we're going to bring, be bringing back to you in, in 2013 with respect to some of the capital funding options, and we'll continue to work towards a solution on the financial for the planning exercise.
Thank you, Brad.
Can we take like a, take a quick break?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Then we would need to extend the meeting because it's down 10:36.
I said a two minute.
You said two minutes?
Yeah.
I thought I heard 10. Sorry about that.
Okay. Where's Cecilia? All right, can we come back to, we don't want to run up to our 11 o'clock deadline if we can.
Mayor and council, Paula Fitzgerald, Parks and Open Space Project Manager with the Public Works and Natural Resources Division, and thanks so much for hanging in there for a difficult subject. And this is actually a perfect segue, as Dale mentioned earlier, coupling all these projects together, I think gives you some perspective. You just listened to a, this very start of a very long-term project, and what I'll be giving you is where we're at the, towards the end of a very long-term project, and I think that's something to applaud and, and to feel very good about. So I'm happy to be here tonight to present an overview of what we've completed in the development of the St. Brain Greenway project, the trail project, and what we have yet to accomplish. So we are currently in the planning of the final two segments of Trail Corridor within our Longmont Planning Area. Phase 12, which will extend west from Golden Ponds, and Phase 13, which will extend east from Sandstone Ranch. Also planned is Phase 14, which is a final trail enhancement project for the Phase 13 segment. So our Greenway work over the past 20 years has master-planned, designed, and built eight miles of trail. And as you can see on this map, over four district parks and two additional trailheads to the system. Master planning began, as has been mentioned before, in 1992 with the original seven-mile segment of the St. Brain Greenway Master Plan. In 2001, we updated that plan and extended it east to what was then our newly purchased Boulder County, or Boulder Creek Estates open space parcel. But our significant local efforts are only part of the overall picture. In 2000, we participated with Weld County in the Weld County-led St. Brain Valley Open Lands and Trail Plan, which envisioned the, the Weld County extension of our trail system to St. Brain State Parks, the Trittowns, and then looped down to the town of Erie. In 2004, Longmont participated with Boulder County in the St. Brain Master Plan, which updated our western trail limits and reflected an extension into Boulder County and all the way to Lyons. As councils are aware, our St. Brain Greenway is also part of the Colorado Front Range Trail Plan, a statewide plan that envisions nearly 900 miles of trail running from Wyoming to New Mexico. Longmont took part in that planning effort in 2003. So Longmont has shown to be a worthy partner in these joint planning efforts and has led the way with putting these grand ideas into actual trail on the ground and in wide use today. These have been examples of, also of our great working relationship with counties and with the state. So throughout this effort, our trail has been planned and developed using Conservation Trust Funds, Great Outdoors Colorado Grants, State Trails Grants, and numerous private donations, including the Roger and Roberta Jones Foundation funding. And I have to say that this project has been largely possible because of that dedicated funding source over that, all those years. Since we're now within a few short years of our trail's completion, staff engaged in a public process beginning about a year ago as to what should be considered for future use of this funding source. Staff will bring council more information on the topic in the near future. So our work in 2012 is looking at three phases, Phase 11, 12, and 13. Phase 11 is the Pavlocas Open Space Parcel between Main and Martin Streets in lower downtown. And as you've heard from Nick, this project area is closely linked to the Anderson Flood Plain Study, recently underway. So we've put our master planning on a temporary hold until we know what impacts, if any, will result from that flood plain modification. Our project will then collaboratively plan for improvements that might be done in advance of those significant flood plain modifications. This 58-acre district park is centrally, centrally situated for visibility and access and could help stimulate redevelopment of the southeast urban renewal area. Staff in a variety of city departments is working collaboratively on this project. As we're now engaged in the planning of our final trail segments, even greater regional coordination and cooperation is ongoing. In terms of trail expansion projects, we're also engaged with planning for 12, Phases 12 and 13. We're moving forward with the, the design and landowner negotiations for Phase 12, which is shown on the screen at this point. And as you've heard earlier tonight from Barb Brunk, a letter of intent has been signed for the property west of Golden Ponds, and we're hopeful that an agreement can be brought to you and finalized in the near future. As mentioned before, Phase 12 will extend the trail from Golden Ponds to Airport Road, run beneath Airport Road, and then go north from the creek to Westview Middle School. Boulder County will extend the trail west to Pella Crossing along the north line of the Zweck property. They already have an agreement with the Zweck's owners in place and are moving forward with detailed design. The county is taking the lead in the design for the Phase 12 project as we hope to build the entire Golden-Pella connection in a single bid project in 2013. Boulder County plans to continue the trail west from Pella in the near future, first to the Brawley Open Space, where they hope to develop an environmental center and trailhead. And then they will continue the trail towards Lyon as soon as they're able. And this slide shows our Phase 12 CIP planning with funding sources and timeline noted. And just to mention that Boulder County will use their dedicated transportation tax for their portion of the project. So we show design in 12 and 13, construction in 13, and using both Conservation Trust Fund and Street Fund monies. The Street Fund, of course, being dedicated to the portion of the trail that will run right along Airport Road in the street right away. Phase 13, the next slide, is also currently in the planning and land negotiations phase. Previous planning had assumed a south-of-the-river trail extension through Aggregate Industries Mining Areas, Boulder Creek Estates. We've been unsuccessful with land negotiations needed for this alignment and have discovered a new bald eagle nest near that proposed trail area. So because of these issues, our current efforts are looking at an alignment north of the river, where the trail would extend from the existing Sandstone Ranch trailhead and travel east utilizing city landfill and the north end of the Boulder Creek Estates properties. And again, on the next slide, is our CIP planning with the funding and timeline, again, the design in 2013, construction 14, and this project will be funded entirely from Conservation Trust Funds. So a meeting was held this week with St. Brain State Parks and Firestone and was very productive. There's strong interest in collaborative planning.